Mr. Shi?
Here.
Ms. Arico?
Here.
Mrs. Ward?
Here.
Mrs. Maroni?
Here.
Mrs. Peng?
Here.
Mr. Brescher?
Here.
Mrs. Patel?
Here.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Dr. Chen?
Here.
All present.
Opening statement, the New Jersey Open Meeting Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have best notice of and to attend meetings of public parties at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has called notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, place there posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of the notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on January 3rd, 2019. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and applicable state regulations. So today is a little special today, as you can see there's a little thing on my desk. I am trying to livestream our meeting at the A Brighter Edison Facebook site. So if anyone who's on the Facebook and can go to A Brighter Edison, and please share with the other Edison groups. Before we actually start-
No, I'll just throw it in the trash.
Before we actually start with our- Oh, sorry. Before we actually start our regular program. Alright, it's working. It's working. It's working. So, I'd like to make an announcement. And this is something that we've been working on for a long time. The announcement I'm gonna make is the school district has selected the finalist, a final candidate for our superintendent. And the superintendent is Dr. Bernard Reagan. So, I'm gonna ask him to say a couple words at the next meeting, because that's our, you know, we could potentially vote on the resolution. I know some of the folks here are some of Dr. Reagan's friends, and they are here to say a couple words, so I'm gonna let them speak-
There's no- what the hell are you doing? There's no date on-
So I am gonna ask them to speak first, so if they have other engagements or anything, they don't have to wait till all the way at the end of the meeting to make public comments, okay? So anyone who wants to have any comments about Dr. Reagan, about superintendent, and this is the time, please go to the podium, name an address, and whatever, six minutes.
Coach Cal, 392 Sutton's Lane. I actually wanted to commend the board. The last meeting I saw, there was a couple things going on that I really didn't understand as just a regular person, and I wanted to commend you on selecting Dr. Reagan. I feel safer with my children, knowing that he's the head of this. Not only do I know him, but he was also my coach. A lot of people don't know that-
Were you a good player?
Was I a good player? What do you mean was? Dr. Reagan taught us a lot in the early 90s, I believe, is when he was coaching there, from 90 to maybe 95. But as a sophomore in high school, I think it was very instrumental to meet somebody like him. He wasn't the head coach, he was a young up-and-coming, and he really helped me become the person I am today. Right now, I'm the president of Edison Boys Baseball, and I really, really enjoy that role. And if it wasn't for people like him in my life, I don't think I would've been able to do this. I wanted to say thank you to everybody who decided on this, and it really means a lot to us, the community. I have two children in the school system right now, and like I said before, I definitely am happy, I'm pleased, and I don't think you could've found a better candidate. Thank you very much.
Citizen of the year, too, right?
Me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you very much. Anybody else? Anybody else? Dr. Reagan? Alright, so you can come at the next Monday meeting, you can have other opportunity to speak, and you can always come, you know, afterwards. Alright, so now let's go over to our regular program, which is, we're gonna do is the presentation of the referendum, okay? As a lot of you guys know that we have referendum coming up on December 10th, and we have our experts here, our architect, we have our BA, we have superintendents here. So we'll go through a presentation, that I have probably 20-something questions that have been collected, based on the Facebook, based on the discussions I have with different folks. So I'm gonna ask them this question right here, live, and people can hear the answers from them, instead of, you know, getting piecemeals from Facebooks and whatever, okay? With that said, let's get started. Marcus? You wanna do this?
We're gonna watch the video first?
Yeah, we're gonna watch the video, then we'll do a very brief presentation.
Edison has been recognized as one of the fourth-best places to live, not only in New Jersey, but in the entire United States. Our teachers work day in and day out to make sure that our students walk out of their classrooms ready to innovate, ready to solve real-world problems, and ready to make a difference.
Your schools are ranked in the top percentage in New Jersey educationally.
It explains why our hallways are bustling, why our classrooms are packed. The word's gotten out, Edison is a great place to live and to grow up.
Edison population's increasing, and our students are increasing as well, our teachers and our classrooms are not.
Edison Township School District has grown to 16,622 students in district for 2019. Based on the projected growth of our community, within the next three years, 2,919 of our students will be without a seat, meaning they are not within the district's current capacity. With so many children to care for, six schools have been strategically selected for major upgrades to alleviate overcrowding district-wide. Edison Board of Education is proposing the 2019 referendum to address the overcrowded classrooms, safety, and security of our children's future.
The school was built for about 1,600 students. I think there's 2,700-plus now. We're pushing 600 students over capacity based on the New Jersey student learning standards. Students are getting to class barely on time or late. The hallways weren't designed with the population size that we have now.
There's always what the state says is correct, but then there's what the educational research says is correct, and then it's what kids know is correct. And we're over by hundreds and hundreds in all of those areas.
Us teachers can't even walk around the room because there's so many desks crammed in. I sat in this very classroom taking care of as a student at JP Stevens, it wasn't like this.
Overcrowding at this school is kind of ridiculous.
Going through the hallways is chaos.
See, at the intersection, it's like everybody's just standing there, it's like all crowded.
We have kids who sometimes will fall or get knocked down because there are just so many students in the hallway at one time.
Passage here, trying to get through here is an absolute disaster.
Our halls are not even, you know, barely eight feet wide, and it makes crossing Route 1 in the morning look like a picnic.
All of our specials are on carts, which means that the students sometimes during the winter never leave their classrooms, and I couldn't imagine being at that age not leaving a classroom at all.
I work off a cart going from class to class, six classes a day. Sometimes classes are outside of the school, they're in trailers, we can't even take our carts there, so sometimes we're on foot with a bag.
The science classrooms have not been updated, probably not since the school actually was created in the 60s.
The shelving isn't even intact.
We were doing a lab by the teacher's desk, all of us were surrounding that one desk. Half of us couldn't even see, it was really hard to learn and focus because there were so many people.
We're not able to put air-conditioning units into certain rooms because they'll trip the whole room. It's 1950's electricity, and it just doesn't go with today's electronics.
One thing right now that poses a huge safety hazard for us is our students having to go outside to the trailers.
The trailers were rescued from New Brunswick School District, they got them for free.
Clearly, that was just a temporary situation, but now we're going on five years where we're using these trailers because we need the classroom space.
There is a distinct smell where we have to often put dampered buckets around a classroom to alleviate the smell or the moisture. There's parts of the wall from the moisture that are collapsing. There's the last row in certain classrooms, the kids cannot sit because of the rotten floor.
We're in a situation where we have to maintain them because we're keeping the trailers suitable for the students, but suitable is not good enough.
We want to have them inside the building so I know all my students are safe in the building at the same time.
I'm really nervous once winter sets in, you know, how they will be going back and forth. It's a health hazard to all the kids.
I have French in the trailers, every seat is taken up, a lot of people in the back can't hear or see the board.
Doesn't matter when it is, you can't park. People are parking in lots everywhere, side streets, parking in people's driveways, it's really bad.
My mom has to drop me off a mile away from the school to walk because there's so many parents dropping their kids off.
You take a look at schools our size, we've got a gym that's for a group-one school. Where a group-four or five, our gym should be two or three times the size that it is. Our athletic facilities just aren't up to par.
We aren't able to get the proper stretching or have the proper amount of space to do physical exercise because there's so many people crowded in one area.
I understand the library was shut down because of lack of, you know, additional room, and that is just so sad.
We have to end up cutting their lunches short so that they can leave early to avoid the bottleneck because we can't have them be in late to their next class because then that impacts instruction.
You'd be spent 15 minutes in a lunch line and you barely get to eat, it's gonna get worse. Because even in my four years of high school, I'm seeing things change.
The kids come back home, they always bring back unfinished lunch boxes, that happens every single day.
Sometimes there's not enough places for them to sit, or they're like on the edge of the bench.
I basically have like five minutes to eat, that's a pretty short time to eat lunch.
There's so much interest in some of the clubs that, and there's so many kids, we can't accommodate all of them.
Students aren't allowed to take the classes that they want to because it's overcrowded.
I've been in the district long enough, and we actually did have a full-day kindergarten at one point, then we went to half-day kindergarten. I know the benefits academically, emotionally, developmentally for those students when they had a full-day program. For our students who are in half-day kindergarten to come to full-day first grade, it's a hard transition for them.
Last year, we were indeed a full-day kindergarten.
Getting the kids to another after-care or before-care facility was an issue for us.
My first son had half-day, my second son had full-day. The amount of learning that can happen from a teacher who has his child there for the six hours during the day, it's night and day.
Our assistant principals office, one of them is in a closet that we've transformed into an office. We have a counselor who's also in a transformed closet slash office.
We have three ladies from our food service committee that kind of all share one closet, and they have to serve the children in a hallway while everybody's passing. Their steward's facility would not necessarily be used for a kitchen, but we use it now because it's all that we have.
The orchestra room is so tiny that the overflow has to come into our room constantly.
So our students then have to stand in the hallway and play their flutes or their clarinets.
We might even have to convert our custodial area into a classroom if this does not work because we're in dire need for at least four, five, six, basically we need almost nine extra classrooms.
The referendum was proposed to address the New Jersey student standards for class size and environmental space for students. We'd effectively have to build a new JP Stevens to address the needs of all the students that are experiencing overcrowding at this point, but since that's spread out across the district, it's not a good solution.
I've had the chance to look at the architects' plans for the great things that we have in store for Edison. If the referendum passes, we really will get to move our schools into the 21st century. We are going to be able to take Edison to the next level and really show the world why we are one of the greatest places to live.
It's not just, well, my child's in this school right now, and it's not gonna impact them right now, but we know that high schools are gonna be impacted greatly, and the students that are in elementary school now, it's gonna impact them so much by the time they get to high school.
If approved, the total cost of this project will be $189.5 million. $31 million will be covered by debt service aid, funds from New Jersey for eligible school construction projects provided by the state. The rest of the cost, amounting to $158.5 million, will be covered by the total district share. Edison residents will, on average, see an estimated tax increase of $18.67 per month.
Edison has one of the lowest costs in the state to educate a child. In fact, there's 95% of other districts that spend more on education than Edison does. Those same districts have a higher administrator-to-teacher ratio. So what does that tell you? We're putting the money into the classrooms where it belongs. It is needed, and these schools are overcrowded, and we need to take care of this.
The education here is such a high standard, and I feel like the overcrowding's really bringing it down, and this is one way we have to kind of push to keep our standards up.
There's no way in the world they should not consider this, because it's only gonna get worse.
If we're not gonna invest in our schools and we're not gonna invest in the safety, people aren't gonna move here, and if people don't move here, our property values are not gonna be maintained.
The unfortunate next step, if we don't have the referendum pass, is that we're gonna have to look at something called a split schedule for the high school. What is that? That is where we have two sessions of instruction for students. We would start slightly earlier and have a session in the morning, which would end in early afternoon, and then we would start a second session for the second half of the school, that would start in the afternoon and end in the early evening.
I remember when there was split session at the high school. JP Stevens wasn't even here yet. Edison High School had split sessions, and it was a real drag. Sports were affected, music was affected. How do you have a football team if half the kids are there in the morning, half the kids are there in the afternoon? It's a major problem. It would be a major problem for us, for sure, because how do you run a band program? It's impossible to put that together unless they're all here at the same time.
If the referendum doesn't pass, we are not doing what's right by our students. It's been hard enough for our kindergarten teachers to try to cover a full-year's curriculum into half-day. If this happens at our high school, our students are going to fall behind. We want Edison to remain one of the best places to grow, to learn, and to be, and if we move to split-day high schools, it's not going to be possible.
A lot of my friends whose kids were in elementary have sold their properties and have moved out, primarily because of the overcrowding issue. So over time, you know, it did affect our own property values, and that is not, you know, what we were imagining when we bought our homes here a few years ago.
Our educational rankings in the state would fall. It would just be a downward spiral. Edison has always been one of the leaders in innovation ever since the first incandescent light bulb that was placed here, and I believe we need to keep that tradition going.
Our greatest asset is our children, and our children are our future leaders. We have to give them the best opportunity to learn. This bond referendum will help every child. It'll help our students here at Lincoln, it's gonna help the middle school, and also help the high school. So this is a huge, huge deal for Lincoln Elementary because finally, we'll get kids where they need to be.
No matter who you are, if you're a senior citizen, of which I'm a member, if you've got students that are in fifth grade, doesn't matter at this point in time, this is so needed. It's such a major problem, that it would be a major mistake if this referendum did not go through.
The referendum vote will take place on December 10th between 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM at your regular polling locations. Visit abrighteredison.com to learn more.
Okay, so that's the end of the video. I have probably watched the video probably 15, 20 times, and every time I watch it towards the end, I get a little bit emotional, so. Now let's go to the presentation. We have our architect here, so Marcus, take it over.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Marcus Rosenau, SSP Architects. We've been working with the district for about a year, studying the situation, and the presentation we have here tries to capture, I think the video actually did a good job of covering a lot of it, so I'm gonna try to move through and make sure that we reserve enough time for questions. But basically, what's being presented to you and some of the things that we've been doing lately, I guess go to, who has control of the? Oh, it's here? Ah, awesome. There. So as you heard from the video, basically, the major part of the problem that we have is overcrowded classrooms, you know? I'll show you the capacity and enrollment here in a minute, but we're really dealing with an issue of almost 3,000 students who don't have a place to sit, you know, without cramming them into a classroom. So that's the direct issue, you know? The impact of that is ultimately, you know, the impact on, you know, property values and the value of the community, and how much we can get out of these schools, in addition to, you know, just the overall safety. I mean, we all know that we're living in a, you know, a more dangerous world than we were 20 years ago, or even 50 years ago when these schools were built. So part of the plan that we need to address is, you know, how do we keep our children and the staff, teachers, administration, safe from the outside influences, right? So here you can see a little bit of a trend of the enrollment over the last 20 years, and how it's actually being projected moving for the next few years. So the actual capacity of the school is that 14,000, oh, sorry, the distance is making it a little way here. The 14,000, just under 14,000 square feet is where that, where the capacity of the district is right now, but as you can see, you know, the capacity overall of kids actually in the district right now is almost 17,000 students. So, you know, we're, as of today, short, almost 3,000 students, not to mention the number of people that we're actually projecting over the next few years. This shows that again, you know, the blue area being, you know, kind of historical data of enrollment, the red being, you know, the next five years, and then green projected out a little bit further from that. Now, when the state looks at things, we're really looking at the next five years primarily, but they do allow us, you know, especially since we have the high schools, to project out a little bit further, just to, so we make sure we're addressing the trend properly. And you can see, that purple line is kind of where we are right now in terms of the overall capacity of the schools. There will probably be a question coming up here soon, and I'll go ahead and try to address it now, but, you know, the state really looks at capacity in three ways. And the first of, and kind of creates the biggest gap, is what's known as a functional capacity, in that, basically, take the overall area of the building, you divide it by a certain number per student, you know, area per student, and it's 125 at the elementary schools, it's 151 at the high schools, and you come up with a number. And, you know, unfortunately, when you look at that one, you end up with about 6,000 unhoused students. So, you know, that's just a numbers approach. So the other, the other way we look at it is the educational, the educational capacity. So in that sense, we take the number of classrooms, kind of look at the area of the classroom. So, you know, most classrooms are about 800 square feet, that's the ideal size for your standard classroom, that'll fit 24 kids. But, you know, you also have to look at the fact that some of these rooms, some rooms that are being used as classrooms are maybe 500 square feet, 600 square feet, so that means that they can't hold as many. So when you run through those numbers, and really that, that approach really only takes into account classrooms, it doesn't consider, you know, any other kind of specialty rooms, that gets you a number that puts us more like 5,000 students unhoused. Now, the other way the state allows us to look at it is through district practices. Now, you take the educational approach, which looks at the number of classrooms and the size of classrooms, and you get this one number, but then because at the high schools and middle schools especially, you start looking at music rooms and art rooms and other spaces that, you know, the state doesn't necessarily look at as an educational capacity space, but, you know, as you're using the buildings, you're using these art rooms as homerooms, you're using music rooms as homerooms, you're programming these spaces fully, so when you look at that projection and how the buildings are being used, that's how we end up with the 2,919 unhoused, unseated students at this point. So again, as mentioned in the video, you know, we, some, a number of things have been done over the years, but, you know, some of them are supposed to be short-term solutions. You know, the trailers are intended to be, even by state standards, a short term at most, they want you to see five-year solution, but we're well beyond that. So as you saw, those start to deteriorate and the maintenance becomes a problem over the years. We're looking for a long-term solution that really is a cost-effective solution, you know, something that's not going to burden you with additional maintenance and operations over time. So here's just another quick summary of the, of the capacity issue, and to target the solution of that, we're really looking to focus the solution at six schools. You know, part of the process, and we'll get into this a little bit later, is we looked at all the schools, we looked at a lot of different things, we looked at new schools, we looked at additions at all the schools, we looked at a number of different things, but it was really, when we looked at the straight enrollment, we saw that the biggest issues were at these six schools, so this is where we're focusing the effort to really make sure that we're able to house the unseated students. Now, you know, a lot of, one of the questions that comes up at times is, you know, why do we want to do this, and, you know, maybe somebody else from the board will want to address this a little bit more, but, you know, Edison is a proud place to be. You have a good history in town, you have a lot of achievements that you've been able to achieve over the years, and recognition for that, and you want to be able to maintain that and not, not see that go down because we're trying to cram everybody into, into classrooms improperly. So this is why we're presenting the referendum at this point. Now, the question often comes up, what have, what's been done to date? You know, you saw the graph, you saw, you know, there's, we certainly saw the projection and the enrollments, you know, coming, you know, what's been done to try to address that in the past? And as you can see, for the past 14, 15 years, there have been efforts to, to pass referenda, to renovate and add-on to the schools to address that capacity issue, but, but each time, over those last few years, you know, over those years, it's actually been rejected. Except for the one that, you know, about four years ago, which was meant to rebuild Monroe, and, you know, of course, you know, that really didn't incur much long-term debt because that was all based on an insurance settlement. So this is why we're kind of in crisis mode right now with the, with the, with the enrollment and the projections. So how did we get here in the last year or so? As I mentioned, we were hired about a year ago to take a look at the situation, figure out, okay, what's the best way to work on it? And the first step for us was getting to know the district, you know, walking through all the schools, interviewing the administrators, the custodial staff, the board, you know, district administration, to really understand what the issues are, how the buildings are functioning, make sure we understand how all the different spaces are being used, and to really just get kind of a basis of the existing conditions. We identified a number of capital projects, so capital projects like roofing or boilers that need to be replaced, or, you know, different things like that. We established a list of projects that are needed just to maintain the buildings and make sure that you're not creating more problems down the road. There, there was an updated demographic projection, in other words, we took a look at those, those numbers and see, to see where the students are really coming from. Are they really here? You know, what is the trend? How, you know, where is that number going? And so that was, that was updated at the beginning of the year. And then we started looking at all the different options, you know? Again, I mentioned, you know, we did study the possibility of a new school. We looked at the possibility of, you know, something on existing property, on, on existing board property, so you didn't have to incur the cost of that. We looked at other options within the town as well. But ultimately, just, you know, settled on a solution that adds-on to each school because that became the most cost-effective, it became the most practical in terms of operation, operationally long-term, and here, we're at this point where we are presenting a plan to everybody, you know, in December for that, for that, the expansion and renovation of six schools. Now, outside of this plan, and out, you know, given the failed referenda in the past, you know, there have been some things done to try to alleviate the situation and still make sure that the district is able to function, and that's why you end up with the trailers, you know, the classroom trailers, and the fact that kids have to go outside to go to these trailers. You know, a lot of those specialty programs, art and music, have been moved to carts so that classrooms can be, can function as homeroom classrooms. You know, the, there are actually programs happening in the class, in the hallways, those kind of things. More recently, you know, there were, at two schools, we expedited some plans to add modular classrooms. Now, these are more permanent classrooms, but creates a permanent solution for some classrooms to alleviate the overcrowding issue, and this was done to eliminate the need for that really long-term debt. This was all done within the, within the operating budget, and so part of the, part of the solution was to try to address it within your own budget versus taking on the long-term debt. So, you know, the, the board has tried to address those kind of things within their, the capacity that they have now. And of course, you know, there's other work that happens, you know, in terms of renovating and maintaining the buildings along the way. So you heard in the video the, some of the costs, you know, I think we'll get into some of the more detailed costs of that later. The thing I will point out on this particular slide is that the impact and the, the value of the home that you hear, it's important to understand that that is the assessed value of your home. That is not- That is not the market value of your home. A lot of times, and, and we've seen, and the numbers that we've seen as we've studied this, a large difference, you know, a $179,000 assessed home might actually be worth $300,000. It's important that you look at that assessed value. So again, you know, the plan being presented to you for vote is to address the growth, to address the potential and, and the anticipated future growth, deal with site and safety and security, and of course, that will allow overall the, the improvement of the educational adequacy, the educational function of the schools, and make sure that we maintain, are able to maintain quality programs and quality results of the district. Get into the different projects, again, six different schools, intended to add classrooms and, and address safety. What happens if we don't do it? That's often the question. Well, you know, things are going to continue to be on carts, we're going to have to find spaces for more, more, more space for the, the students who are actually already here. We're probably going to end up having to put more trailers out there, which is really only a short-term solution because the Department of Education is going to insist on a long-term solution of how we're going to address these things. There's, there's the potential that if the, we're not able to add these classrooms at the high school, we'll probably have to go to split sessions, which for those of you who don't know, means you have a group of kids going to school in the morning and a group of kids going to school at night, you know? What's that? So those are the kind, some of the things that we have, that are, are being weighed when this number is being presented in front of you. Now, here, this is a summary of the different costs, you can look at it in a little bit detail on the website, you know, abryderedison.com, but, you know, these, the numbers that are being presented basically is a, an overall maximum budget for the project, you know, we cannot go beyond this number, we have to make the plan work within this number, and if it comes in less than that, great, you know, then, you know, it's, it's, the bonds are not necessarily sold to the, you know, to the $189.5 million, it's sold to the, what we end up awarding to the contractor. But these numbers include, you know, the hard cost of construction, they include site work, they include, you know, labor, materials, you know, fees, permits, all the regulatory things that we have to work through, as well as, you know, a contingency in case we find something along the way that was not anticipated. And just the, one other question that often comes up is, well, well, how long will all of this take? So the first thing that we're going to have to do, you know, once the referendum passes, is, you know, actually start some of the design and come up with a fully detailed implementation plan, because we can't just go in and start doing it all, you know, we have to figure out, well, we're going to put the additions up first because that creates some swing space to get, you know, kids into classrooms so that we can then renovate spaces and turn, you know, sometimes return them back to the media center use, right? You know, right now, there are schools that don't have a media center, a proper media center, because they've been taken over for other things, like auxiliary gyms or, or classrooms. So, you know, we, we would have to work through that process of doing it, but the goal would be to start some work the first summer, so basically summer of 2020, to start some of that work while the rest of the heavy design of the additions and the renovations continues, which, because that part of it will likely take the better part of the year to happen, along with, you know, all the permitting and the code reviews and the regulatory approvals, you know, there's site, there are site approvals, utility approvals, you know, code approvals, soil erosion, environmental approvals, all those things have to happen along the way before we can actually put it out to bid, you know, public bid, and, and proceed with the lowest bidder. So ultimately, we're anticipating this plan, you know, with, will target the, most of the work being done within a three to three and a half year period, with some of it probably having to stretch out to year four or five. You know, sometimes the question comes up, well, you know, you're going to have contractors working on the site with my kids, how are we going to deal with that and make sure everybody's safe? And the way we, we manage that is making sure that the additions are totally separated from the addition, from the existing buildings. Any work that has to happen inside the existing buildings is done either escorted by somebody in the district during the day, or it's done nights and weekends when the kids are not there. We require background checks for all the contractors and anybody who's on site, there, there's, there are safety and security plans in place, you know, there, you know, there are certainly temporary egress plans to make sure that people can still get out of the building, you know, and it's practiced that way during drills and whatnot. But basically, you know, we make sure that though, the safety of the students, the safety of the, of the administration and the staff is paramount to the construction, that, you know, safe, site, safety and security comes first. Basically, make sure you go check out abryderedison.com because there's a lot of information there, a lot of info, a lot of questions that are coming up along the way are being posted with answers in the FAQ section, and there's a little bit more detail there as far as the need, the details of the class, you know, what the projects are and whatnot. So with that, I will turn it back over to the board and open it up for questions.
Okay, thank you. So we actually have some printout about the, the presentations that we just went through, so if anyone wants it, you know, feel free to, to get it, okay? All right, so I have some questions that I have collected, and I'm going to start to ask away. So Marcus, why don't you stay there?
Jerry, can I, Jerry, can I just say one thing? Because this is one of the things, I guess, that, that kind of bothered me when I first got on the board here, was, the board has been trying to do stuff with the overcrowding for a while, and just in my term on the board, I witnessed us spend a million dollars on trailers that we put in, then we just spent like almost another million dollars on trailers again, I think it was last year, then we spent $2 million on a small modular, and another $2 million on a small modular, and when I add up 2, 4, 5, 6, in, in my time on the board, the board has spent $6 million, we've basically made a, a tiny dent in it, but if the public would have approved the bond back in, I think it was 2010, which would be about what we're asking for today, we're asking for a little bit more today, but if we would have paid that much more money then, we wouldn't need to spend that $6 million for there, that $6 million would have went to pay for the debt of the $169 million that they asked for in 2010. So we, we didn't do the, the big addition, so we didn't spend $6 million, but we spent the $6 million anyway. So, you know, where, where I go is if we don't do this, the board is going to spend money to still do all these modulators or whatever it is, and you're going to, you're going to spend six or seven million dollars in the near future anyway.
Yeah, so that's, that's some of the questions that's going to cover some of this. So let's just start, I have 22 questions here, okay? So the first one's, what have you done to look for land? Didn't we study this overcrowding question before? Why now?
Uh, there, there was a previous study done, and that was shared with us when we started this work, and really, the, the effort that we went through, this long-range facility plan effort, was kind of an extension of that, that was the next step to look at, okay, well, what are we going to do about the overcrowding? So we, you know, the, the renewal of the demographics, the, the new study of the enrollment was really just a refresh of that and then building on that to figure out what we're going to do for the solution. So to answer the question about what's been done to look for land as part of our process, as I mentioned earlier, we did look at, say, you know, I think it's Jefferson, we looked at some open property behind Jefferson, we looked at, there's some open land near Menlo Park, I think the Kilmer site was studied, you know, there are a number of different areas where we looked at it, but, you know, between the presence of wetlands, you know, the size of it, because, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the capacity issue is actually at the high school, to get high school classes, you need a lot of land, so there just wasn't enough land at some of these locations to make that happen. So, I mean, we went through those, those issues, studied different possibilities, and ultimately arrived at the plan that we have in front of you now.
So, yeah, Rich, Ralph, you want to add?
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I was doing this back when I first got it, Frank Healan was the president, and we went around and we looked at the Catholic school down by Avenue, Amboy Avenue and Fords, which is like half in Edison, half in Fords, we looked at the land on Talmadge Road owned by the DeLeos, we looked at the land on Wood Avenue and Oak Tree Road, we looked at our own land behind TJ, our land behind JP Stevens and John Adams, the land across the street from there, the mayor helped facilitate some meetings with developers that did own the land, and they did find land for us that would enable us to have a high school, it was over on Woodland Avenue, and if everybody drove down Woodland Avenue, you're not driving two buses down it, so it would need a major improvement. But beyond that, you were going to transport then the students all the way across Edison, you couldn't get any far north than Woodland Avenue. So it, it didn't really look like it, and then we took a walk back there and we found that there seemed to be some wetlands back there, so that would also limit our use as far as one big high school, because that, that was, I think, Frank Healan's original idea. So at the end of the day, we even found land for the mobile site, Mobile 127, but all of that land was contaminated, and you, and I know that everybody's going to say they clean it up and they put homes on it, and I, I thoroughly understand that, but nobody on the board wanted to put our students on it and take that responsibility, so we kind of nixed anything that had contamination on it. But that was probably like a year or better.
Yeah, so, yeah. When we were, when I was on the overcrowding task force committee with the Kightown Council, this goes back almost two, two and a half years, we also had Mr. Stotchell, who knows all about open space and land that's available, he was a great resource, and there's really not much in Edison that we could have built on that Edison owned. I mean, there's a lot of private property, but I think, as Rich mentioned, how much is it an acre?
You're talking about a million dollars an acre.
Million dollars an acre to buy, and we need 50 acres to build anything, so, minimum. So if you're talking $50 million just to buy the land and then throw in another 70, you know, $50 million building on it, it just wasn't feasible. We've been working on this for over two years, I know Mr. Shea appointed the overcrowding committee, we worked with the township, we had meetings with the township going back three years, four years ago, and we're still working with the township, we had a very productive meeting last week or two weeks ago, so we are working on things, but this was the best possible plan that we could come up with right now to solve the emergent issue that we have. So it's not like we haven't been looking at this for like three or four years.
Yeah, Mrs. Maroney, I think that you and Dr. Healan went a joyride. Yeah, you want to make some comments on that? Yeah.
Um, yeah, towards the end of Dr. Healan's term as president of the board, he and I took a ride, we rode all over Edison, we went down by, in Raritan Center, looking, because we heard there was land there, but there was nothing really that was usable. We drove all over and there was just nothing.
Thank you. All right, so the other questions, Marcus, you, you touched on this already, what are the other alternatives the board has investigated before we reach the decision of this referendum?
So we did look at some level of grade reconfiguration, you know, there was some look at, you know, instead of a K5 school, having a K4 school and shifting some things around, you know, ultimately, that proved to be a little bit more expensive, you know, there is the, we explored the idea of combining two high schools into one, you know, and just in, in looking at the possibility of one unified consolidated complex, but that became overly expensive, and really, if you're talking about trying to fuck, top, trying to operate a school that has over 5,000 students, that gets to be a bit of a challenge in and of itself. So, you know, that was, and not to mention, all the costs of upgrading that one high school with all the utilities and services and just, you know, all the other capacity needed, generating spaces that you need to make that happen. So again, that was, that was set aside because of the, the, the high cost of that. We looked at the possibility of early childhood air, you know, a separate early childhood building, we looked at the possibility of a, you know, separate special education building, but ultimately, you know, some of those solutions don't necessarily solve the problem at the high school, you know, it, it kind of shifts some, some of the kids around at the elementary levels mostly, but ultimately doesn't, doesn't arrive at a solution that really gets you at, at the heart of the problem, which is at the high school. So those are just a few things, as we mentioned, in addition to, you know, looking for other land.
Do you want to, any board member wants to add other alternatives?
Well, I mean, you're either going to put more trailers on, on all the property, or you can go into like a split session, but a split session, again, I believe is going to have some kind of cost impact.
Yeah, we're going to have that question.
Because the staff is going to have to work, instead of ones, they're going to work 1.4s or whatever it would be for that extended schedule. Somebody brought up all-year-round school, which is another good idea, but again, with that, you're going to have the increased cost of that staff during that time. The only one that doesn't really have an impact, like monetarily on the district, and it's only a short-term solution, is to redistrict. But everybody, when you mention that word, everybody starts yelling and screaming and says you can't do it. But that's the only one that has no cost implication. So all the other ones do have cost implications, so to me, if you're going to spend the money for that, for those other cost implications, spend the money and put the addition on.
And I will add too, that we did look at the possibility of a third high school, you know, we, we looked at the possibility of combining them into one, but then also, hey, what happens, since we have almost 3,000 students, you know, what's the possibility of building a third? And as we mentioned, the property alone is going to be, you know, $50 million potentially, the cost of getting all the infrastructure, you know, the utilities and everything to it is, is a, a large cost in itself, the cost of the building, construction, and then the long-term operation of it, you know, it's a whole new administration, whole new staff, you know, everything that you have to add on top of it as well.
So the, I just want to add, the recent, New Brunswick has a brand-new high school on Route 27, their capacity, I think it's 2,200 students, and the cost is $170 million. So that just puts something to perspective, you know, about a one new high school, and we're discussing about this, building this one new high school, then we do some redistricting, but again, it's a cost, we, we have to look into it, okay? Well, this, this one's, he already answered this, you know, with this referendum, we're adding 122 rooms, well, we're model, altogether 122 rooms.
Yes.
So one high school with 122 rooms, that'll be a mega high school.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so that's a, another issue that, when it comes to operations and feasibility. Okay. Now let's get to some of the, the money questions, and then I'm going to ask you some of the questions, okay? We have, as Mr. Brecher said, that the, the district has done some additions for our schools. The example is the, the JP Stevens and Exton High School, we added two new science wings, one science wing each, and Woodbrook and Menlo Park, we added the new wings, right? So the question is, how long was the term of the financing, and did the district receive any debt relief of this financing?
Both four of those projects we were talking about were done with lease purchase or capital outlay. We, for the science wings at both high schools, we went out for a five-year lease purchase, and we paid it off over five years, it had a fault within our 2% cap, so that's one of the problems with a lease purchase versus the bond, the bond falls outside the cap. So we did that with a five-year lease, five-year lease purchase, which we're allowed to do as long as we keep it within our cap. One of the schools, Menlo Park, was back when Dr. O'Malley wanted to use some of our banked cap, which we had, if we don't go to our 2% cap, we, we're allowed to bank that and use it for future years, and if you don't use it within three years, you lose it. Well, at that time, we had about a $5 million banked cap balance, we added to one of our, our budgets back in 2014, and we actually built the Menlo Park addition with that money. With Woodbrook, in the following year, in our capital outlay budget, we had $5 million, however, when we went out for the ref, the bid, the bid came in $11 million. So we used our $5 million we had in our capital outlay budget, but we also had to go for a lease purchase, so three, we only did three years, and the last payment actually is this year, so after this year, that, that lease purchase payment is paid in full. So all of those were either covered by capital outlay, cap, uh, cap, uh, capital reserve or with a lease purchase.
Okay, so did we get any debt relief from the state on any of these lease purchases?
The only time you get debt relief from the state is if it's a bond, you get no debt relief from any of those.
Thank you. So the example, you know, you know, I like to use is whenever we go out and buy a car, right? Do you pay it with cash or you finance it? Obviously, in the, you know, these new additions that we did in the JP and Edison High and Wood, uh, Woodbrook and Menlo, we basically bought the car with the cash we have, right? And if we had financed it, we could probably get more money, and we had, we received no state aid if we continued to go this route. So that's a point I try to make, okay? How much? How much is the district current debt? And in what that is, in what date this debt will be paid off? And what is the annual payment of this current debt?
Right now, we are down to one outstanding bond as of today. The one bond, the one you saw up on the screen, we passed in 2002. That was when we put additions on all our elementary schools and we put full-day kindergarten in place. It was a twenty-year payout. It's gonna be paid off in July of 2022. Right now, our payments, right now, we owe in total one-point-five million dollars, it's five hundred thousand a year for three, for the next year and the following year. And then the last year, it's in July, the last payment's in July fifteenth, so it's actually gonna fall into the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So we actually have three more years, we have to cover five hundred thousand dollars in principal. And the interest total for the, for those three-year period is eighty-six thousand. So right now, our total debt between now and the end of July of '22 is one million five hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred fifty dollars.
Okay, thank you. So again, if we pays off the debt, it will offset some of the borrowing we're gonna incur with this current, current referendum.
Correct.
So, again, let's go back to the referendum. What is the estimated annual payment of this new hundred-eighty-nine million dollar referendum?
I just talked to our financial advisor today, just to confirm the numbers I have. They worked up the numbers for us, which we pretty much let everybody know what, that the anticipated number based on the current interest rate of three-point-five-three, which is what they're proposing, would be the interest rate, could be, could be a little, a little higher and a little bit lower than that. But right now, they're estimated to be three-point-five-three. The total amount, including that, the interest, over the thirty-year period is eight million nine hundred seventy-two thousand dollars a year. Now, I originally thought that the fourteen point, the thirteen-point-nine-four percent debt service comes off of that number, but I confirmed with them today that that's not the case. So the actual number over, on average, throughout the thirty years will be eight million nine hundred seventy-two thousand. And what they're gonna do is they're gonna make it an equalized payment. As the principal, as you know, when you pay your house off, a lot of the interest is up front, and then you pay more principal at the end. Same thing with this. So they're gonna equalize it. As the interest goes down, the principal will go up. So after thirty years, it'll be eight million nine seventy-two, and that will be two hundred twenty-four dollars on the average home.
Okay. So again, we actually touched this, but I'm gonna ask this again. What happens if the referendum does not pass? Anyone, you wanna reiterate?
Yeah, I mean, reiterate the fact that you would likely go to split sessions. We'd have to get some more trailers, you know, and then every few years, you'd have to come up with a plan of how you're gonna, you know, eliminate those trailers and just kicking the can down the road. So ultimately, maybe putting more kids in, into each classroom and making it more crowded than it is at this point, but possibly eliminating programs, you know? Some redistricting might need to, need to happen as well.
Can you say that you're...
Wait, 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 wait. Let, let's, yeah, let me finish up, then you have your chance. No, no worry, no worry. So the other thing is that we talked about split session, and there will be some financial impact. So what will be the financial impact if the school goes to double shift? And what is the cost we do all-year-round school? So Margaret, you have some estimate on the, on the timing, right?
I'll defer to Dan first.
Okay.
If we go to split sessions, we're gonna have two major issues. First of all, we have the ETA contract. They're, they have a seven-and-a-quarter hour day. If we go split sessions, are we gonna need more staff? Or are we gonna use the same teachers for the morning and afternoon? Are they gonna exceed one seven point, uh, seven-and-a-quarter hours per day? Which means we'd have to renegotiate that with the association. Will we have more transportation? Now you're gonna have morning and afternoon, transportation back and forth to school, so your transportation costs would go up. So how much, I'm not, I don't know if, it won't be doubled, because you're not gonna be transporting all those kids. You're gonna have, you're gonna be able to cut down on some rounds, because you're gonna be doing less in the morning, less in the afternoon. But you're still gonna have to split those up, and it's probably gonna cost you more money in transportation costs.
Okay. You want to add? Yeah.
Thank you, Dan. One of the things I had worked out, and if anybody is curious, what exactly does that mean, split schedule? I have a sample of that for you here, also on the front of the table. What this goes back to, it harkens back to the early nineteen-sixties, for those of you that are here, that were here, back at Edison High School. And basically, what that means is, the first session would start at seven-twenty-five and end at twelve-sixteen. That's a four-hour and fifty-one-minute period day. There would be a short break. And then the second session of the day would start at twelve-twenty-five and end at five-sixteen in the evening. So exactly what Dan has already mentioned, you know, we have a contract with our teachers that it's a seven-hour and fifteen-minute day. So when you wanna compare apples to apples, the difference between what we presently have in the collective bargaining agreement and the nine-hour and forty-two-minute day, which is what it would become, would be a net increase of twenty-five percent. So that's twenty-five percent additional time that students would need to be supervised and instruction would need to occur. That is just the instructional piece. We've already mentioned transportation, we've already mentioned space. So I also just wanna reiterate the idea that tailor, trailers are not a long-term solution. The State Department of Education actually frowns on it. They constantly ask you, when you put that forward as a solution, okay, so this is what you're gonna do for the next X number of years, what's the long-term solution? So I just wanted to reiterate that again.
And one last thing I'd like to re, just mention, if we're gonna go to twelve-month classes, we would have to put air conditioning in our schools. You're not gonna have kids in the schools in July and August without air conditioning. So you're talking about millions of dollars to retrofit your schools if you want twelve months. And we'd also have the issue with the teacher's contract.
Yes.
Well, and even, even with the split session, I'll even add the fact that, just think of the extracurricular impact, you know? Kids going to school until five-thirty, you know, but, you know, they're competing with other schools that are starting games or practices at four o'clock, you know? How do you, how do you go to school until five-thirty when you have, you know? And how do you go to a game at four when you have school until five-thirty? I mean, those, those are the things that have to be coordinated and worked out.
So the, you know, our superintendent just mentioned that the, the cost, just the hours is gonna increase by twenty-five percent. So you do a very simple calculation, the, just salaries and benefits are gonna go up by, you know, twenty-five percent. So I think our salary is somewhere around a hundred-and-seventy million dollars per year?
The total salary for everybody, yes, not just teachers, yes.
Yeah, so the, you know, so you can do some calculation, you know, how much the impacts are gonna be. Our majority of the staff are, you know, in, in the, we have a lot of staff in, in the high schools. So that's the calculation you need to calculate. And the a hundred-eighty-nine million dollar bond referendum, Dan just said, it's a little bit over eight million dollars per year. So you have to weigh that as to the financial impact. And the other thing I've been, people have been talking about is James Monroe School. We built James Monroe School at twenty-three and twenty-four million dollars, okay? Cost of building James Monroe is twenty-three million dollars versus a hundred-and-eighty-nine million dollars. Why so expensive?
So first, you just have to look at the sheer size of Monroe compared to, you know, what we're building here. You know, we're building a school that was meant to house four to five hundred students, you know? It's sixty-six thousand square feet, I think it was. So twenty-three million for four hundred students compared to almost three thousand students now. I mean, you just kinda do the math, well, you're, you're approaching a hundred-and-thirty, a hundred-and-forty million, I believe. You know, that's just for the additions and the new construction, not to mention the new, I mean, the renovation that we're proposing as well. So, you know, there's just that straight projection of costs that way. And then, I think you probably all seen the, kinda the market and political impact of the, of the costs of materials and construction. I mean, the things that we're buying nowadays, the cost is going up. You know, as architects, we've seen the price of projects go up pretty drastically over the last year, year and a half. And so, we, we have to take that, that into account as well, because, you know, when we establish this budget, it has to work for us for the next five years, you know? So that's why a hundred-and-ninety, a hundred-and-eighty-nine million dollars.
Yeah, 'cause I, if I remember, there was a presentation that compared the per-square-footage cost versus what is proposed, and add the inflation as well. So we are on par or even lower than the per-square-footage cost for James Monroe. You want?
On the per-square-foot basis, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Anything you want to add? Okay, so the other question is, now, we're talking about overcrowding, we're talking about classrooms. So the, the other question is, why are we spending money on renovating office spaces? Why, why, when that does not benefit children? Office spaces and, you know, athletic fields?
You know, I mean, I'll defer to, to the educate, educators a little bit, but, you know, part of it is that, you know, you're, you're holding an office for three people in a closet that has no, not, it does not have the proper ventilation. You're trying to bring kids into it, you're trying to have a meeting with them. You know, there's just no room to, to maneuver and have those kinda conversations. So it's, it's really about making sure that we're providing the proper services to the students in the long run.
Thank you, Marcus.
And, and meeting code, I'll add, yeah.
That was one of the things that I was thinking of, that, you know, there is not just the instructional aspect here, but there's also the social, emotional aspect of what students' needs are. Whether it could be a student who's struggling in school, or has some emotional difficulty, or has a learning disability. Some of the, the reason it was important to start this whole session with the video, you were able to see that instruction was taking place in hallways, children are easily distracted, there's other noises going on. So we're, we're capitalizing on space that is less than ideal for the children to be serviced. It's actually a disservice to them. Thank you, Marcus.
I just wanted to add something, because I know some comments were on Facebook about what do gyms and auditoriums and baseball fields and softball fields and soccer fields and football fields have to do. It's, I think it was mentioned by Mr. Ross in the video, we have probably less than group-one facilities. I've been to group-one schools that have better facilities than we do. And not only as an educator, you know, I want the best for the students as far as educational goes to, but I want them to enjoy their student body life as, while they're here. You know, someone was kinda downplaying the, the Edison High School new baseball field that we're working on now. Edison High did not play more than two to four games home last year. They had to be bussed to other facilities. And thank you to Coach Cal and Edison Boys for, you know, allowing us to play on his fields. But that's not what it should be. That field is sinking, it's in bad shape, and that's the reason why we looked at it and we are fixing it. And hopefully, we'll be getting a shovel in the ground within the next four weeks or so. But not only there, we're, we're looking to improve the inside, the gymnasium at JP and Edison. We're looking to do the same thing for a baseball field over at JP Stevens in the future. So it's not only about classrooms, it's also about the facilities in general. You know, the kids need a, a venting process of getting out of the classroom and relaxing, playing co-curricular, playing sports, playing whatever. So, I mean, I think that's extremely important, and it's being addressed a little bit, not totally, but a little bit in this referendum, because again, we don't, we don't have the space. So I just wanted to add that from the co-curriculars, athletic side.
Yeah, just the, if you look some of the diagrams, some of the current athletic fields needs to be moved to open up spaces for buildings. And while we move this space, why don't we just upgrade it? And the, you mentioned about the Edison High baseball field. That money actually is not gonna be part of the bond referendum. This, this is something that we have saved in the past couple of years, and that's a, that's a separate bucket. So technically, the bond referendum has already dropped by one-point-five million dollars. All right, so Marcus, on the slide, you mentioned about the, what if the bond referendum is approved? There will be a lot of bids and stuff like that, right? So this question is, what happens if the bid's coming lower and we do not need to use a total of a hundred-and-eighty-nine million dollars?
Yeah, well, as I mentioned, that number is the maximum budget that we have to work with. So, I mean, you know, the discussions that we've had, and Dan, you can confirm, is that, you know, we just don't bond for the money that we don't need, you know? And so that, that overall lowers the price of it. So, you know, if we can make it happen within the budgets that we have, that's what we're gonna use, you know? That's what Dan.
Yeah, we, we are hoping, obviously, that when we bid this, it will come in substantially less than that one-eighty-nine-five. However, if we don't have enough in there, we can't go ahead with the project. But if we have more than we need, we just don't bond for it. So that one-eighty-nine-five is the worst-case scenario. If it comes in a hundred-and-sixty million, I'm only gonna bond one-hundred-and-sixty million. And I'm also not gonna bond it all at once. As, as Marcus said, we're gonna be doing this over a three- to five-year period. I'm only gonna bond it when I need it. That way, we're not paying interest on money we didn't need at that point in time. I don't, number one, I can't have, I can't make interest on, on the bond money for any one time, because then you get into an arbitrage issue with the IRS, and then you have problems where you have to start sending the money back to the IRS. So we wouldn't be bonding until we actually needed the money, and it's only for the amount we actually bid.
Okay, thank you. So the next question is about the scope of the bond referendum. People are saying that, you know, has questioned about what, what this bond referendum is gonna do. So can the money be used to hire additional staff? How the district will handle the cost of additional staff with the addition of these new classrooms? So Dan, you wanna take that?
First things, the, when we go for a bond referendum, legally, we are not able to use it for operational costs. It's only gonna be for the construction of these four schools. I can't even use it for a, a seven school. If I had extra money, came in a hundred-and-sixty million, I got twenty million more, I can't use it for anything else. The voters are voting for this referendum based on what we're presenting. I can only use it for that, and I can't use it for any operational costs, including salaries.
So how are we gonna address the additional costs if, 'cause we're gonna hire some additional staff?
We would probably have to look at the possibility of maybe using some bank cap. If I can't keep it within that two percent cap, we would do everything we can possibly to keep it under the two percent cap, if possible. But right now, I have substantial amount in bank cap that we haven't used over the last four years, and I could use some of that if I needed to go above the, above the two percent cap.
So that...
We also are planning on using some of the existing staff, too. We're not gonna be filling these rooms with brand-new staff. We do have staff members in other places, in, in some of these closets. They're gonna actually get a full-size classroom, and we're gonna use the closet for a closet again.
Trailers, too.
Right, trailers, exactly, yes.
So basically, you know, the, the staff cost will be the regular operational cost, and that'll be a part of our annual budget, and we're subject to that two percent cap. And just keep in mind that the state still owes us sixteen million dollars, right? So we've been able, very lucky, to get additional stated in the past, you know, two, three years. We hope that will continue to, to be like that, and that will actually help us offset some of the operational, operational costs moving forward. So this is about kindergarten, all right? This is, this is the question that's been posted on the website. So you're only adding classroom to three primary schools. How will that address a full-day kindergarten while the other elementary schools are not touched? Are you guaranteeing full-day kindergarten?
Well, I can address the part about how we're, you know, how this referendum fits into that picture. Basically, you know, by creating, by creating the new space at the schools where we're doing the work, that allows some shifting to happen. There's also gonna have to be some work done to, to, to move people within rooms. You know, right now, we have some rooms that, because they have to have a self-contained toilet for special ed, you know, we might only have, you know, four, five, six kids in a full-size classroom. But, you know, within, you know, operating budget, we're, we're gonna be working on getting, you know, those students relocated into a, a smaller room that then has a toilet, so that we can recapture a classroom. It's those kinda things, along with the fact that, if you remember that, that enrollment projection, you know, at the elementary level, that, that enrollment projection is actually leveling off a bit. So as long as that is all maintained, from a capacity standpoint, you know, you have the capacity to implement full-day kindergarten again.
No, I mean, I, I know that that was one of our major concerns. Everybody wanted to have that full-day kindergarten back. It's something that we had and we lost, and we want it back in our district. I mean, we were talking about preschool, and we can't even take the money from the state that they're giving for preschool, because we have to offer full-day kindergarten first. So, so there's a lot of opportunities that we're losing because we don't have that full-day kindergarten now.
One of the other things that we, again, like I mentioned, we had a great meeting with the town council members. We're looking at Stilton School. Possibly, I know it's a mess, and people are gonna say it should be destroyed and everything else, and yes, it probably should be. else, and yes, it probably should be, but the four walls, it has a great exterior. I think it's a historical-looking exterior. So, if we could just take off the roof, strip out everything that shouldn't be in there, bring it up to code. I, I mentioned at the meeting, and again, this, we're going to discuss this as a full board, obviously, but when we, when we do our committee reports with the full board, that would be a perfect school to implement pre-K, kindergarten, those type of programs. So, that's another option that we're looking at. Nothing is in set in stone. We haven't made any commitments. The town hasn't made any commitments, but that's something also we're looking at. To renovate that building, I think Rich mentioned probably 10 million dollars roughly.
That's probably where you'd be.
Yeah, I mean, it's better than building a school for 25, 30 million dollars, so, and we would get a full school. So, that's something else.
So, the other thing is about the, the continued expansion of the Edison Township. More new homes are being built, right? So, the question is, is there a memorandum of understanding with the township, the zoning board, that will not allow single-family dwelling into multiple unit buildings? And is any discussion with the township to slow down some of the development?
Well, you know, I'll let Ralph do that because this was Ralph, you were the chair at this meeting, but we, there were a bunch of issues we brought up.
Yeah, I think I mentioned a couple of the residents that came by or emailed me directly. We had a great meeting. There are a lot of things on the table, nothing set in stone. We're talking about doing something similar to neighboring towns and pence and asking council to pass ordinances where they go in and inspect these apartment buildings. And that, I think those are the major culprits, where they have 10 mattresses in a two-bedroom apartment, okay? Right now, no one's doing anything to look at those areas or inspect those areas. We had a very good meeting with the council people and they were going to look into what neighboring towns do. We have a neighboring town that does it right now. They charge the owner or the landlord certain fee and allows them to come in at any time to inspect the apartments. We also talked about, I guess many years ago, it was, the zoning law was changed where you could knock down a single-family home and put up two or more. They're looking at reversing that where if you knock down a single-family home, you put up a single-family home. So, they're looking into that. Again, this takes ordinance changes and law changes and things like that within the township, but the discussion has been open. We also spoke about non-residents that are going to school in our district. I got the numbers from administration. We, we, that's another question, so I'll answer it. We find 50 to 80 students a year. We investigate 400 to 500 students a year or homes a year, I guess I should say, not necessarily students. So, we do have full-time attendance officers that go out. We're looking maybe even to add an attendance officer or two to the budget and aggressively go out and find more if we can. Again, we also spoke about increasing the finder's fee. I think it's, how much now, Dan?
200.
200 dollars. Yeah, for 200 dollars, I don't, maybe I don't want my neighbor throwing rocks through my windows. But for 1,000 bucks, I may. So, we also talked about and looking at possibly increasing that finder's fee. So, a lot of things were discussed to curb and alleviate and start really digging into the illegal students, illegal homes, illegal, how many, you know, people in apartment buildings, those types of things. So, we're hoping within the next 60 to 90 days, we'll get some action from, you know, the council members.
No, I mean, the only thing we talked about was also was fines. Because, because when we, when we catch, we catch people, we investigate and the problem is we don't know, when did they start? So, to investigate, when did they actually start coming into our district illegally, let's say? We spend $10,000 in investigation fees and then we have to sue them, which then means we have to pay our attorney, you know, another 10 or 20,000 dollars to defend it. It's, so it's, it's not cost-effective for us to go after them. So, what happens is we catch you, you leave, and you tell everybody else, oh, you know, when they catch you, you just got to leave. It's not a big deal. But the township, we talk to them, if they can impose an ordinance and a fine of whatever it is, 5,000 dollars or whatever it might be, that'll dissuade people from saying, you know what? Yeah, I, I don't want to get caught because the court system's going to track me down. You know, they're, they're very efficient at that. I notice when, you know, you're a little late paying a parking ticket or something like that, they seem to be able to get that money from you right away. So, that was one of the important things I think we talked about.
And I'll just mention from a capacity standpoint, because I know this has been a comment online about things, you know, enforcing that is great, but, you know, that's not the solution to a 3,000, 2,900-student problem, right? I mean, even if you double it, you know, you're, I think you said 80 is what you're finding, so even if you double or triple it, you're not coming anywhere close to the real capacity of what we're dealing, we're trying to capture.
Alright, so, Marcus, in your presentation, you actually touched upon, on this one, a little bit. This is the, the processes of, you know, build the schools after the referendum is approved.
Right.
So, you know, Dan, can you just elaborate a little bit of what are the processes when we, whether the referendum is approved, what are the processes go for next step?
Okay, well, first of, first of all, we have to appoint an architect to actually do the design and the specs for the referendum projects. And that can be, it doesn't have to be, but it's because it's a professional service. So, they can pick an architect or they can put out an RFP to get proposals in from different architects and then pick one from that group. It does not have to be a formal bid and the reason why the state does not make it mandatory is because if you put a formal bid out and a one-man shop puts in a bid and he meets the specs, you got to give it to him. You don't want to do that. You want to go, you want to make sure you get somebody who can handle the job. So, you can put an RFP out, you bring them in, and then you can pick which one you want. If you want to go that route, or if you have an architect you like and you, you trust them, you can just appoint them if you want to. But in our case, we probably would go off an RFP, that's what we've done in the past. Then, then once the architect puts together all the plans and the specs, we put it out to bid, then it has to go to the little bidder. Now, if that happens to be a lousy contractor, unless we had a poor performance and we, we can throw them out, but we don't have any contractors that we've had that experience with so far. So, whoever gives the little bid, no matter who it is, we have to give it to them, if they meet the specs.
And, you know, there's probably a process, you know, 189 million dollar referendum, you're probably going to hire a construction manager to serve as your representative and kind of your eyes and ears against the design and the construction as well. So, you know, there's a process of hiring a construction manager for the, for the set of projects.
That one's not a professional service. So, that one, we would have to go off for a competitive process. We, the last time we did it, we did it through a competitive contract, which is another form of, it's not a formal bid, but it's a form of a bid, but it's not as formal as a formal bid.
But we did the, I think we made a job description for that market, right? For like a construction manager. So, as opposed to us going out and hiring a construction management firm, which might be friends with the architect, not that I would say that they would be, this would actually be an actual employee of, of the district, short-term. You know, unlike other positions that get hired, you get hired, you think you're going to be somewhere for 20 years in the construction industry. You get hired and you think you're going to be there a year, two years, and that's just how construction goes. Everybody kind of moves around. So, so that would be something that we would look to do in-house with our own employee.
Yeah, that's also, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, you know, to continue on what the process, you know, there, there's a whole aspect of, you know, due diligence that us or, you know, whoever the architect and the engineers are, are going to have to go through a process of studying in more detail the soil where we're putting the additions and make sure that, you know, to minimize any surprises, you know, once we start digging, you know?
Oh, you know, somebody asked a question about that, as long as you went there. They asked why we didn't get actual pricing on it, so we know exactly what the cost is. So, maybe if you could just explain your process of doing, you know, like a general estimate as opposed to doing the soil samples and all that additional?
Yeah, so, you know, at this stage of the game, you know, we rely on historical data, you know, so we've done enough, you know, we've hired enough, you know, geotechnical engineers to study those things that we have an idea that, you know, to get 30 borings, you know, it's going to cost us much, so we create an allowance for that. And then, as we refine what the plan is, then we give it to them and get a specific price for that. You know, same with a lot of the other due diligence. You know, we, we create that based on, you know, past experience and our expertise, you know? There's only so much of it that you want, so much money you want to spend before the referendum, you know? So, to some degree, you have to rely on, you know, the expertise of your professionals to kind of bring past experience in and, and provide you the solid recommendations. So, that's where we are with that, you know, at this stage. You know, it's, it's the geotechnical, it's, you know, the survey, you know? We need to understand what the topography of the site is. So, you know, surveys haven't been done on some of these sites since the last edition and, you know, some of them possibly not since the 60s, you know? So, you know, we need to understand that stuff. We need to reach out to the utilities. You know, all of these things cost money, you know? Sampling for asbestos and lead and PCBs and, you know, materials that were put in 30, 40 years ago when it was legal, but sometimes they're still there. So, you know, we have to capture that and make sure that if we're demolishing a wall, we know what's there so we don't endanger the kids, you know? So, we, there's a lot of due diligence that we want to go through upfront to make sure that the process of construction is a lot smoother and you minimize the, the risk of change along the way. Of course, with all of that happening, you know, we're meeting with the district, we're fine-tuning the plan, making sure we understand, hey, where does the cabinet need to be? Does this door location work? Do you need a sink? Do you need, you know? We go through all those things. We go through, you know, the aesthetics of it, you know, what color tile do you want? You know, all of that stuff has to be decided before we put it out to bid. And believe me, there are thousands of decisions on projects like this that need to be made before it goes out to bid. So, you know, it does take, take a little bit of time.
Yeah, I just want to add that, you know, Mr. Brescher mentioned that we had a job posting outside there, tried to hire a employee or contractor, whatever you want to call it, to oversee the, to work with architects, to work on the details of the architectural design. And, you know, we all say, you know, the devil's in the details and the cost is in the details, right? So, I like Taj Mahals, but I do not want to build Taj Mahal in our schools. So, we don't want marble floors, we don't want, you know, doorknobs that's, you know, gold-plated doorknobs that's imported from Switzerland or something.
You need something that's, that's practical, you need something that's durable because, you know, you are spending a fair amount of money on this. You, you need to make sure it's going to last. You know, we, we are building these things not for 10 years, not for 20. We're building these things for 50 to 70 years, you know? We want to make sure that you're, you have resilient buildings, so, we do, we do want to be diligent.
So, the actual cost will become from this detailed design and from the bid. That's why this 189 million dollar is just a max that we can spend and we all hope that we don't have to spend that much money.
By the way, they say God is in the details, too, so you have a lot of beauty in with detail, you know?
So, you already touched on this, but this is one of the questions. How long will it take to build and why so long?
Why is it taking so long? Because of all those things that we kind of talked about already, you know? There is a process you want to go through to make sure, you know, you have all the details, you have all the information that you have up front. There are some staging of all of this that we have to do as well, you know? As I mentioned earlier, we kind of need to build the additions so that we can move kids into the additions so that then we have the space to do the renovation, you know? You've seen the video, you've seen how everybody's crammed in. It's, there's no room to breathe and construct those renovated areas, so, you know? And when we get into those renovation areas, we have to think about doing it in the summers, you know, or, you know, in breaks, or, you know, maybe nights and weekends, but that's even harder. So, with, with summer timeframes getting reduced, you know, school years are getting longer, summer, summer's getting shorter, schools are used year-round for different activities, you know, that window of a summer to do a renovation project, you know, you only have so much time to do it or you can only get so much done. So, we kind of have to spread it out across multiple summers, multiple years to get it done.
Alright, so, the other question is, how about schools not identified in the referendum? So, Margaret, you want to address that? Or Dan?
Can I start on this one, Dan?
Sure.
Well, there, there are six schools that are targeted as, as we've already outlined, but I would like to preface by saying that ultimately, all students in Edison are going to benefit from this. We have two flagship high schools and all children ultimately end up at one of those flagships. The district has shown itself to be fiscally responsible over the years and will continue to do so with renovations that have been made and additions that have been added on that through the regular operating budget. So, for example, things like the addition to Woodbrook, the 10 modules that were just added on at Woodrow Wilson, modules that were just added on at FDR, Menlo Park, and the replacement of Monroe. So, when you add this all together, that's upwards of 11 schools that have been touched upon in one way, shape, or form. That doesn't mean that those types of renovations are going to stop while this other major construction is going on. So, this type of work is what gets identified in a long-range facility plan and there are things that are identified as being urgent and in need of attending to and other things that can be done into the future. Dan?
And the other thing, as I had mentioned earlier today, this doesn't preclude us from continuing on a short-term lease purchasing, purchase of, of purchasing for additions. If you want to put a small addition on a school, we can still do that through a lease purchase, just remembering that it has to fall within our 2% cap. So, we still do that and we've been doing it for a number of years now and it's successful, it helps, but it doesn't secure the major problem that we look to solve here.
And I'll expand on what Margaret was saying is that, you know, while the, the six schools are the focus of the referendum, there have been projects identified at every school. You know, that long-range facility plan, you know, that process that I described earlier about studying every school, there are projects identified everywhere. So, you know, the, the referendum was strategically put together so that, you know, we can focus on those big items that need to be addressed with a lot of money while the other capital projects, small renovation projects can be dealt with over the years through the regular budget.
Yeah, I just want to add, this long-range facility plan, you know, Margaret mentioned, it is on the website. And if you actually go to the district website, you can see that there's something about all the 19 schools that we have in the district. And what we did with this referendum is that we put these schools in different categories. We are, right now, we are addressing the category one school that in dire needs of resolving overcrowding. The others, we also have, you know, diagrams of what we need to do. Those will be the ones that we will continue to address them.
And I'll add out there, too, I mean, there are some projects that were left out of the referendum because there are other funding opportunities available, you know, in terms of grants or, you know, working through an energy savings improvement program where, you know, you can kind of fund the, the improvements of, say, you know, mechanical units or lighting, you know, things like that that will save you energy. That reduced operating budget of saved energy can actually be used to fund those improvements. So, you know, there's a reason why some of that was left outside of the referendum as well.
There were a lot of discussions, you know, in the past month or so about the bond council. So, why do we need a bond council and how was the current bond council selected? And what will be the maximum payment to the bond council? Is competitive bidding needed for professional services like the bond council? And if not, why? Dan?
Okay, bond council's required by law. Now, bond council's actually the attorney. They actually handle all the legal documentation that you do when you have a bond referendum that passes. There's a lot of paperwork that has to go to DOE and has to be approved. They have to put the specifications together for the bidding for all of the, at the interest for that 30-year period and put together this whole bond documentation. Is it required to be bid? No, it does, it's a professional service because it is an attorney. Did we do a competitive process? We absolutely, absolutely did. We've used two bond councils over the last 20 years. I went to both of them. One of it was Willens, Goldman, and Spitzer. The other one was McManam and Scotsman. I got a proposal from them through an RFP, request for proposal. I had them give me a proposal with a maximum and both of them came in and I worked up the numbers based on the phase-in on so much per million of bonding. It came out to over 200,000, but there was a maximum on both. Will, Willens came in at 50,000 max, McManam and Scotsman came in at 85,000 max. They both do a great job. I would have been happy with either one of them, but I went with the one that was less expensive and, and that's why, that's why we ended up with Willens.
Thank you. So, the other one that has been touched upon briefly is about the out-of-district student, okay? Again, we are going to ask Margaret to, to answer this. How many investigations we conduct and how many do we catch? And, you know, then you can talk about the fines and tuition and stuff like that.
I think Mr. Erico has already touched upon this.
Yeah, I got the numbers, yeah, I got those numbers from Margaret, actually. We catch between 60 and 80 per year. We do upwards of 500 investigations a year. As Mr. Brescher mentioned, it is, and again, being an educator, I know when we catch a student in my district, it's very difficult to recoup the money that you feel they owe you because it'll take forever, it takes years, attorney's cost and so forth and so on. So, what I think Mr. Brescher mentioned that we discussed in the meeting with the council is imposing a fine through the council where they just take you to court. You know, we don't have to, you know, file lawsuits and things like that. If you're caught and it's proven that you don't belong in our district, we just now send it over to the township and they send a policeman over or however they handles, a warrant, whatever. And now you got to appear in court and you, and it's up to the judge to enforce upwards of X amount of dollars or so forth and so on. So, that's how we're handling that.
And the next question actually has already been addressed, which is, how will the district handle multiple family living at one address?
Again, with working with the council at our last meeting, there's a neighboring town that goes in. Again, with working with the council at our last meeting, there's a neighboring town that goes in and actually does mattress checks is what they call it. So, if you're renting an apartment anywhere in New Jersey, in Edison, and it's a two bedroom and whatever the statute is or the ordinance is, if you're allowed four mattresses in those two bedrooms, if there's any more than that, they get fined, the owner gets fined, the landlord gets fined because it's ultimately his responsibility to enforce those ordinances. So, we are working with the township on that. As far as single family homes, there's not much we can do. If you own your single family home and you want to bring in your sister and brother with two kids each, not much the town could do or we could do. It's your property, you're paying taxes on it, you own it, much different with apartment buildings. So, that's where we are working with the council to focus on those apartment buildings throughout the township.
All right, we're coming down to the last couple of questions. I'm sorry. Just, there are a lot of things that posted on, on the website, that's why we wanted to address all together with everybody so people can hear it from the expert, okay? So, this question is for Dan. How much is it, and, you know, Marcus, how much is a debt relief from the state? The new construction versus renovation?
Renovation, actually, they give you more money. They give you 40% of total cost of renovations. New construction though, they give you a, I don't know where they get the number from, $143 a square foot, you get 40% of that. If the actual cost per square foot is $300 or $400 a square foot, you're still only getting it based on $143 a square foot. So, the amount you're actually going to be getting is a lot less than 40% and the number we came up with based on the, with the renovations and the new came out to 13.94%, just about 14%. And that came out to 31 million. Now, 31 million was for principal. That number will actually be higher because they also pay you a portion of your interest.
So, that's the answer. All right, so, this is the last question. So, a lot of our, you know, you can see the presentations and throughout that we rely heavily on the demographic study. So, the question is, how accurate is the demographic study? And can you build more than what the demographic study said? So, basically, it says, the demographic studies say JP is going to have, you know, Edison High, let's say, is going to have 2,600 students. Can you build a school that can house 3,000 students? So, Rich, you want to?
Yeah, okay, the, the demographic study, I mean, everybody that was here heard me argue about the demographic study when it came through because I, I thought there were a lot of issues with it. But with that being said, it turns out it's the same company that's been doing the demographic studies here for, for years and they've been right. So, you know, if, if history says anything, then it should be right. And he did explain to us at the meeting that if he is wrong and he is off and he missed the Herbert Hoover, you're talking about 200 students or, or 150 students that he'll be off by and we're talking about 3,000 students. So, you know, the, the number that he's off doesn't really affect our overcrowding. And as far as us putting this through to the state, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we wanted to build more than, than what we need, isn't that what the state checks us for to make sure that we're compliant and we're not overbuilding?
Correct.
So, so they do that to kind of protect the taxpayers to make sure we're not building a Taj Mahal, let's say?
That's the simple answer, yes. It's, they check it, you know, you, you probably could overbuild, but they're only going to fund what you really need, you know, or, you know, kind of off, you know, the debt service really on what you really need. So, you know, trying to be practical and, you know, looking at what's really responsible, you know, we're putting forth the, the right sized plan.
All right. So, this is all the, these are all the questions that I have, okay? We went through this for a long time and I hope that's, you know, helpful to the taxpayers and whoever is watching. But, you know, I'm going to open up for public to have any additional questions, so.
Yeah, I just got a few, a couple of questions from some of the parents, if you don't mind. One is, I know, JP Stevens is one of the highest priorities on the list. So, do we have any idea that about what time it might get finished on JP?
Not in a lot of detail at this, at this stage, no. I mean, it's, it would be, it would be within those first three years, so.
Okay. The second question is, for those rooms that's not renovated, is there any plan? I know the new rooms are going to have air conditionings and all that. Existing classrooms are, is there any plan to install like ceiling fans or something?
Not, not as a priority item, no, not within the existing classrooms, no. I mean, air conditioning is ultimately part of the long term, long range plan, but it's, it's not part of this, the high priority work.
But for some of the schools like, you know, Lincoln is an example, when we upgrade, we will upgrade the, the electrical circuit. So, they will have the capability of adding, you know, window units and anything like that. Right now, they just cannot do it.
Correct.
And it's just going to, you know, trip, trip the circuit. So, as a part of the, you know, the, the enhancements to the facilities, some of these things will be addressed as a part of the enhancements. So, again, if you guys have any questions about referendum, now is the time to ask because I don't want to, you know, make Marcus wait till the end of the, you know, the, the meeting to open for public comments. So, any public comments was, okay, yes? Yeah, Shivi, yes.
Shivi Madhkar, Nine Allison Court. I just had a question on one of your slides on past referendums and I saw that you said that the, we lost full day kindergarten in 2010 because of referendum. I think that, that's not true because we lost full day kindergarten because budget cuts that govern, because of Governor Chris Christie and, and, and at that time, the Board of Education scrambled to kind of prioritize a few things and, and kindergarten did not make the cut. So, I just wanted to kind of just point that out.
Sure.
And then I have some other things.
Yeah, I'll let the board address that a little bit, but it might have been that, you know, the referendum failed. It's not necessarily the reason that it, it just happened all at the same time.
Yeah, I think Dan has that one for you.
Yeah, we, we, we want to just put, put that up there so people knew that that's the year we lost full day kindergarten, but you're 100% right.
Yeah, because it says 2010 referendum, failed referendum, lost full day kindergarten, so it's kind of misleading.
It did happen at the same time, but the reason why we lost it is because at that time, when Governor Christie got in, he cut us by 5% of our budget. We lost $10 million. Our budget was defeated and the council cut another 6, 6 million, so we lost $16 million and we had, we had to cut 16 million dollars for a budget.
Yeah, I remember that. I think it was another $3 million that the kindergarten program would have cost and we decided to cut it at that point.
Exactly, yes. So, it had nothing to do with our referendum failing, that that's not the reason why, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. The second thing I want to talk about is, why are we talking about split session? Because in any case, the schools will not be constructed until 2025. So, I don't understand why we're talking about split session because it's not really valid at this point, right? Because even if the referendum passes, we're not going to have, the schools are not going to be there, the space is not going to be there. Also, one question I had, Margaret, you passed out this paperwork which says that the AM session would be, if there is a split session, the AM session would be four hours and 51 minutes. Is there not a state regulation for a minimum time students must be in school?
Yes, the minimum number of hours is a four hour day.
It is, it is a four hour day, even right now?
I beg your pardon?
Right now, right now, it's not four hours.
Right now, it's a four hour day.
Okay, so maybe, all right. The second thing that I want to say is, and Rich, you talked about redistricting, but both the schools are, both the high schools are crowded, so, you know, where do you redistrict kids, really?
Well, look, and, and I don't want to offend anybody here, it's from Edison High, I'll just state that right now. But, and, and I've seen Edison High, okay? And, and, no, I mean, Edison High is very crowded, okay? But unless you go to Edison High and then you were to go to JP Stevens, I, I hate to say, you don't know what overcrowd it really is. So, when I say, what would you do? To make it fair, to make it fair for all the students in the district, you need to take students out of JP Stevens and put them in Edison High so they're all crammed up just as much, really. You know, when you, when we go back to that, the redistricting or the, the split sessions, this is if the, if the plan doesn't happen now, the board in the next three years is going to have to come up with an actual plan. Forget about bond referendums, right? You, you seen the public, oh, it's not there. Well, the public shot down 169 million, right? Which had additions to every school. So, it, it really looks like the public just shoots down bond referendums, which then you're left with one of those other choices that, that you're going to have to kind of come up with. Because if it takes you three years to get the bond passed, your three years plus the five years, your eight years. You know, I, I mean, education is only 12. So, a child that's just getting into our system right now, by the time you get it figured out, will be graduating. So, it, it, you're going to have to come up with some decision. I won't be here then.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's imminent right now because, you know, it's, the construction is going to take three, four years in any case. And then, and also, you know, you probably would have passed something by then, hopefully.
Well, three years though, see like that's if you passed it today, or let's say in February or March, if you pass it in the next couple of months, you're talking about, you're going to start to see relief in 2021.
Yeah, the projections show.
You're going to start to see that relief. You're not going to reach that maximum level, you know, four to five years, but you're going to start to see that relief. If the bond doesn't go through, like I said, and this goes through and it takes another year or, or another two years, this is where your problem is, so you're going to have to come up with an alternative plan for then. So, you don't have to redistrict next year.
Yeah.
You know, you're looking at redistricting, not, not next year, like by 2020 or 21, to start to alleviate that, that traffic.
Yeah, because, because the demographic study does show that it's kind of almost peaking at this point and then it's going to plateau and then there's kind of a gradual, you know, decrease, but I mean.
That's what we're all hoping, yes.
I mean, I know, I know the demographic study, I know, I talked to you at the beginning of 2019, the demographic study is, has a lot of issues because the study is actually using 2010 decennial data and it is released in what? And it is making projections for 2019 and so the study already is 10 years old, basically. So, I looked at it and I realized that it's completely, it's, it's not a good study to base it off. And, and also, I think to Ralph's mattress point, I just, I just wanted to add that I think it's, it's not.
Being known as mattress Ralph.
It's, it's also about kids who don't live in Edison and what attending schools here. So, you know, that mattress point would cover kids, the crowded homes here. But then you also have to look at people who.
Don't belong here.
Who don't belong here. So, it's, it's very easy for someone to kind of come to their education office here and say that, you know, this is my relative and she lives with me.
Right.
And they don't have to really show anything.
Or they got phony documents from the landlord or whatever.
Yeah, so I think, I think I did talk to Rich and maybe if there is some kind of policy in place where they have to show tax returns that actually show that they're living with those people, that might be helpful.
Yep, yep.
Shibi, I just want to remind everybody that we have online verification for registration. So, there, there is a system in place and I know that Mr. Erko and I have already mentioned twice about how investigators go out. So, in two years, there have been over 1,100 investigations in the last two years. And last year alone, 60 students or he has to leave the district. So, there are people in place, it is an active policy that we have and there is online verification. The person that oversees enrollment, that would be Richard Benedict, he takes his job very seriously. So, I, I just need to have that out there as everybody keeps dropping that comment.
No, I just want to say, so what are the, suppose I come tomorrow and to the education office or online and I say that this is my relative and this relative lives, lives with me and she has no other address in New Jersey, what are the documents you're going to ask me?
I would be happy to walk you through that process in person with Mr. Benedict.
No, because, because I think the process right now is that you would ask the homeowner for whatever documents the homeowner has, but you would not, and, and the only thing the homeowner needs to do is give an affidavit that this person lives with them. You don't ask for any documents for that person if they actually truly live with you or not. So, it makes it very easy for people to come and, yeah.
The things that we ask for are what are in code and in law, so until those things change.
I was just going to mention that because we have the same issue where I, I work. You only are allowed, because I've called the superintendent numerous times on this child, I don't believe, lives in South Whitefield. The law tells you what you could ask for. You can't ask anything other than what the law provides. So, I'm not sure if you're allowed to ask for tax returns, but if you are, we are.
You're not.
You're not, so we're not allowed.
So, if you're not allowed, I guess, I mean, I don't want to take anybody else's time, but that's something we should, we need to talk to legislators about.
Absolutely, correct.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We got a gentleman over here.
Okay, yes. Name, address? Yes. Hi, thanks for having me here. I actually came here for, for Mr. Reagan and couldn't be happier with your, your plans there. I have a, a question and maybe I'll kind of.
Name and address.
My name is John Wesley, 2705 Wiberg Avenue. Been living in Edison my whole life, two kids in the school system here. One of my questions is, shamefully, when I walked in, I'm a little new here, it's my first time coming to one of these meetings, but one thing that stands out is that this has been a problem since 1996 when I attended Edison High School. So, I don't think building an addition is necessarily the solution to the problem. My question is more for the architects coming up to come. Is there, has there any, ever been a discussion around vertically expanding the schools? Like New York City has, has had this problem millions of times and maybe I'm, it's going right over my head, but what am I missing? I had a few more questions.
You want, you want, you want to, yeah, why don't you ask a few questions? Yeah, ask a little questions, yeah, thanks.
So, so generally, you know, the, when the buildings were designed, they were not designed to hold the load of a second or third story. You know, we'd have to basically span over the existing construction to make that happen and that gets called prohibitive, yeah.
And the other thing I just want to remind you is, you know, once the school's in session, you can build, right? Once you build on top of school, you, you cannot have the school in there. So, what some of the design we have is they're, they're putting a wing on the side so not to interfere with the school that's ongoing. Because you know, when we started building on top of, on top of, how much noise it's going to be, how much distraction it's going to be. So, that's also a limitation. But if you look at the plan that we have for Edison High, JP Stevens, I'm sorry, one of the wings that we're going to do, it's a three story building.
Okay.
Okay. So, we are trying to, try to, you know, go up, not to use as much land as possible. And for the, some of the middle schools, it's also a double story building. So, that's, that's what we try to, try to.
Thank you. And I, I guess another question, the last one, I know you. So, you expand the school to whatever, so you expand the school to whatever square footage your model projects? Is that a five year model that's built out that I see on there? Like, so what's going to?
Well, actually, with the high schools, we're allowed to project 10 years because those, a lot of those kids are actually, actually already in the system.
Okay, thanks for answering my question.
I, I, I'll just add too that, you know, when we did the long range plan, you'll have to look at the actual floor plans and they're available. You'll see that there are areas that we've reserved for future additions if necessary. So, we've tried to take even a longer view to say, hey, this is what's going to be needed to address the immediate problem, but if there's ever another thing, you know, this is where it makes sense to add again.
Thanks for your clarification, I appreciate it. One final thing, I thank you for the time, it's regarding the bond. I'm assuming, again, I could be wrong here, are, are these general obligation bonds that are being offered to the resident, the citizens of the township?
We put a bid out for the bonding and then investors buy, buy those bonds.
Right. Who's the syndicate of the bond? Like who, who's, who, like what investment company is doing, does the bond offer?
Oh, it's going to be a formal bid that they're all going to be bidding, bidding on it. We've had, we've had TD Bank do some, we've had JP Morgan Chase do some, things like that.
All right, cool. And what would be, like, would, would Edison residents get the first opportunity to purchase those bonds only because of the tax benefits associated with purchasing municipal bonds in the township that you live in to help offset the, those $18 and change a month property tax increase that they're going to see because of the addition?
Well, generally, when we go out to, for bonding, it's usually a large financial institution that goes for them because we're talking huge, huge amounts of money here.
Yeah. But, but they're still, they're still very, you know, accessible to, to the public. I was just wondering if the Edison residents have been educated on how that could benefit them because it might help sway the way they vote?
I'd have to check with the bond council, see if that's a possibility, I'm not sure, it's never happened before. But I can check with that, sure.
Thank you for your time, thank you for having me, thanks for answering my question.
All right, I, I just want to add something that, that, you know, folks are talking about, you know, the timing of adding these additions. So, I'm just, I just have a enrollment number from la, at the end of last month, okay? So, I'm looking at the grade 12 students, 1,144, okay? These are students who will be graduating next year. Your entire, in the, in the whole district, 1,100, both schools, 1,144. I'm looking at the eighth grade students, 1,308, okay? So, we are graduating, you know, 1,144, we're taking 1,300, all right? And I'm looking at grade 11, 1208, right now. I'm looking at a grade seven, 1385, okay? This is the number we're talking about, okay? These are the kids that are in the system, they're coming in. This is the number we're talking about, okay? These are the kids that are in the system, they're coming in. Whether you like it or not, they're coming in. If we don't build and these kids goes away, then that's fine. But we know this is not the reality, the kids are coming. So we have to do our diligence to help these kids to find a seat for them, otherwise we're not doing our job. That's what I also add. Anybody else? For bond referendum question, yes?
How you doing? Ken Nelson, nine Dobson Road. I just have a couple of questions here for you real quick. My main question is, who's running this brighter edison website? Because when I looked online through domain lookups, it's registered through a proxy in Canada. So my main question is, who's updating this website and who's updating the Facebook page so that our residents know who's providing this information?
Any other questions?
Uh, yeah, there's a couple. Has our, has this PowerPoint and presentation and video that was presented here tonight posted before? If so, where? Why hasn't an independent committee been advocating for this referendum rather than having our board focus their efforts on it, as, such as Metashin in two thousand and twelve, who, where they focused, had an independent committee? Along with a couple of other questions, such as why, why we're pushing for our residents to act now when this current plan isn't really going to cause any real change until the earliest in three years from now? Along with the fact of, some of the several quotes used in this video, our hallways are busting, are bustling, classes will grow more overcrowded, our school ratings will be negatively impacted. I feel like a lot of the diction used in the website, the video, and this whole campaign in general really is pushing our residents to support this referendum rather than being bipartisan or non-biased in general. I feel like a lot of the advertising online and just general outreach to our residents could have been better, could have been more involved. A lot of people I still talk to still have no idea about this, and as you could tell by most of the people here tonight, we still have no real specifics. A lot of the info posted on the website, I believe, definitely helped, absolutely. But having private, you know, not, not private, but public meetings at a diner, or this, that, the other, it's a great initiative, but I don't think it's helping the majority of our residents. Having meetings on Monday nights and Wednesday nights at five, six o'clock, again, I, I don't think that this is really reaching the real audience and, like, the real residents of this town that are really gonna be impacted by this referendum.
Which one? Certainly, the, the reason that we retain a publicity firm to assist us in this is because we're educators. So we know what we're doing from an educator and instructional perspective. But when it comes time to put together a video, or to take, I think it was at forty-seven hours worth of film that she had done out in the field, to educate all of the residents of Edison. So it's where they know what is actually transpiring in the school setting, it's to give everybody a flavor. So we actually had every single word that is on the website, as well as every single second of the video reviewed by our attorney's office, isn't that correct, Hope? Okay, to make sure that we aren't crossing the line. Because all our job is, is to educate the voters and inform them when the vote is to take place. And we cannot instruct them how to vote. We could just let them know, it's up to them.
So what, what the district did is, we're presenting the facts, right? So we think that these are the facts we're presenting. Whatever conclusion you decide is your conclusion. Throughout the entire website, entire video, nobody said, vote yes, vote no, okay? We're just presenting the facts, we let the voters decide what their decision's gonna be. That is our job, to present that to, to the voters.
I just want, Mr. Nelson, also want to mention that we all have been out, all the board members, Dan, Margaret. We've been going to every school, and every PTO, PTA, PTSO meeting, anywhere we've been invited, we have gone to. So that's how we're getting the word out, we're getting the information out to the PTOs who meet with their parents in groups. The principals are talking to parents, the teachers are talking to parents, presenting the facts. So we are trying to get out there as often as we can, face to face, instead of just putting videos or, or Facebook posts. You know, I'm not a big fan of Facebook personally, but I think it's a, a good social media way to get information out. But again, as a board member, I mean, I don't, you know, it's all on the website, so why should I put it on my own Facebook page? So that's how we've been trying to get out, to talk to people, just to give you information.
To answer the question as where this stuff is, the video is on the homepage of the brighteredison.com. The, the meetings of the, you know, all these meetings are under the voter information, that there has a list of the meetings, that some of them has been listed over here. And on the, on the website, you will also see the meetings that happening at each of the PTOs. That we're having these meetings in nineteen schools as much as we can. And, you know, as far as the slide presentation, the slide presentation is in the last tab of the, I think it's called a voter of resources section. The resources section on the last tab, on the right-hand side, there's a presentation about, about the slide presentation, the sixty-page presentation we did at Edison High School and JP Stevens, okay? There's also a video of the presentation, I think, I think it was in JP, right? Okay, so the Edison High, it's the same thing, so we didn't put another one. And on the left-hand side of that tab, there'll be downloads for all the pamphlets, our six of schools that's impacted. So if you actually, people actually spend a little bit of time on the website, there are a lot of informations on there. And, you know, we, as I said, what we try to do is present the facts to the voters and let you guys decide, okay? If you decide that's the yes vote, that's your decision. If we decide it's a no vote, that's your decision as well. That's our job, is to present the facts.
Okay, well, my, my opening question was, I wanted to know who was responsible for updating that website? Because providing that information would at least give a little more transparency towards, at least the, the source of all this information. Because it's great to have all this information, but knowing that it's coming from a credible source is kind of important, especially considering it's not even registered to a domain in Jersey, yet on the United States.
I can't speak to the domain. I told you that we hired a firm. But what I can tell you is that the information that comes, that is on that website, comes from the referendum team meetings. This, these, it's not that this just happened overnight. We, we've been meeting for months. There's been information sessions that have been available to the public as follow-up to that. There were meetings that take place by the team. What is it that we have to do next? So it's been, it's been going on for quite some time. And that's the type of information that has been gathered, culled together, and, and put on this website for everyone, for their benefit.
The, the PR company, they don't, they don't produce any data. All the data is produced from you, from you, from the architect, from the demographer. None of the dat, any data that's up on that website, you can get if you go to any one of our meetings and you look at our meetings on YouTube. So, so there is no data that's on there that should not be on a video sometime over the last year. And it's all done by the different professionals that we hired, whether it's the demographer, or the architect, or planner. And they give it to her, and she just, you know, posts it and put little circles and little things on there to make it, because that's what they tell me people want to see nowadays. Me, I don't want to see any of that, I just want to see Excel spreadsheets, to be quite honest with you. But it seems like most of the public now wants to get that whole, what do you call it, PowerPoint presentation, because they like that. But that's where the data comes from.
Again, for the meetings, you know, you know, we already said, and we all said that, you know, on, on Wednesdays, we have people nine, nine to ten, and ten thirty to eleven thirty, on, on weekends, eight to nine, at Skylark. So we'll, we'll try to get out as much as we can. And, you know, we, we are doing this, you know, live, and this, this whole thing that we had, these twenty-two questions, will be posted on our district website as our regular meeting video, so people can feel free to go there and, and watch it. And the reason why we're doing this, 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 spending more than an hour on this, is to let people, educate the people about these referendums, about all these questions that are being asked for the board. So thank you, anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
I was gonna, okay. I was just gonna say, if anybody has any ideas on how to get, you know, stuff out there that, that we haven't tried, we'd, we'd like to take that and hear that also.
Anybody else? Yes?
Akhil Malhotra, six Eileen Way, Edison. My first question is, did everyone read and agree demographic report which was used to prepare this referendum? Yes, everyone from the board?
Yeah, they did a presentation.
Yeah, we had a presentation.
Yeah, you have a presentation, but did you agree everything to it?
Oh, agree that it's correct?
Yes.
Well, I'll tell you what, we, we had many discussions, if you go back and we look at the YouTube videos, where we went through, and we had issues with what was there. The only problem with having an issue with it is that he has a track record of his numbers coming true in the future.
Well, the, the problem here is, right, like, if you, if you not agree to their recommendation or demographic report, right? I don't care about the, like, whatever they are, like, services, like, whatever their rating is in the past. It doesn't mean that he or she is, the form is now a better thing, right? So why we use their, like, recommendation when we know it's, there's a big holes in there?
What he explained to us at that meeting was, even if his numbers are off, and his numbers are off by a hundred students or two hundred students, it doesn't change the fact that where he's saying we're short three thousand students, you have a problem. So it's, it's, you know, if you want to argue that he's off by two hundred or four hundred.
Well, I'm not arguing about.
No, I'm saying, if anybody, if, if anybody wants to say his report is off by two, his, his report is not off by three thousand students. You know, his report isn't off by two thousand students. His report is off by maybe a couple hundred students, and when you talk about three thousand.
I don't agree. So I will give you one of the example, right? So we are adding two fifty apartments, correct? So how many kids you are adding into that calculation?
Which two fifty apartments?
You, we are adding at the Jackson Avenue, right?
I thought it was two hundred and twenty, but okay.
Two twenty, okay. Anyway, so, and how many students we are adding?
I think they were predicting like thirty students.
So sixty-four students.
Sixty-four students, okay.
So, so do you agree to that?
Well, we found, in just doing a little survey amongst ourselves, what, what we have with some of like a Rivendell and stuff like that, they kind of look at like, or maybe comparable, was that that's probably like a hundred students, or a hundred and twenty students. Yes, double what the demographer said, but, and, and here's where we're going. So right there, you actually picked up sixty students. You're a hundred percent correct, he's off by sixty.
Okay, but, but.
Well, wait, just let me finish. If you're gonna go on to your other developments that you're talking about, you're absolutely right, another sixty, he's off. And, and another one, he's off by forty. But at the end of the day, you're still talking only two hundred or three hundred students, and in no way does that two or three hundred students impact three thousand students that we're short. So are you right? Isn't it an exact science? No, absolutely not. But does it affect the outcome of how many classrooms we need to build? It doesn't affect it at all.
Well, the problem here is, right, like, you, you are assuming for those apartments, only sixty-four, but during the, like, one of the suing, you have done it in the last three months. You are assuming for those eight apartments, which are coming on Harding Avenue, they're gonna bring back twelve kids to the Board of Educa, to the school. So like, and, and you end up suing the city, right, and basically you lost a bit. So my question is, when you know it, right, based on that Rutgers calculation, that you're gonna lose it anyway. So what was the purpose of wasting taxpayer money?
Oh, okay, let me explain. You just don't understand the system. So let me make this, no, 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 I'm gonna explain it to you, so you, so you understand it, because the public doesn't understand this.
Okay.
The planner, who's sitting right there, cannot come up with a plan and submit it to the state of New Jersey without the demographer's report to give him the numbers. So if those numbers are a hundred percent accurate, or only ninety percent accurate, it doesn't really matter, because he can't submit that plan. So you have to hire someone. Now, what we could have done, what we could have done, was we could have paid the demographer an extra hundred thousand dollars. He would have done a specific stud, a specific study just to Edison, which would be more accurate, to your point, which is a good thing.
Yep.
But at that point, we'd pay him the extra hundred thousand dollars. He might have picked up the additional two hundred to three hundred students, is what we were talking, of which wouldn't really change our class structure that we need, or the classrooms that we need. So it was like investing the extra money to narrow down that window, but at the end of the day, you end up with the same classrooms.
Again, like, we are, we are again not talking about like two hundred, three hundred students, it's going to be more than thousand-plus students.
No, you're, you're, no. I'll, I'll be honest with you, if you're gonna say that, I'm gonna have to tell you that I don't even agree with that. And I, I didn't agree with the demographer's study. But I think you can ask the architect there, he's an actual professional that does this for a living. Can you, can you please just comment if there's any possibility for him to have been off by a thousand students?
No, I mean, ultimately, ultimately, this is a projection. You know, we're ba, you're based, there's, there's historical data that tells you that for two hundred and twenty units, it's gonna generate this range of kids, and, you know, we're well within, you know, the, the projection. Again, if you're gonna be off by a hundred kids, that's, that's all it's gonna be, but, you know, ultimately.
And, and do you do this for a living, or is this your first project that you've done?
This isn't my first, really, no.
Right. So, right, so what we do is, we base our information on what the professionals in this industry do. You know, I'm not a professional demographer, I'm not a professional architect or planner, I'm a professional builder that does build schools and hospitals. So, so that aspect of it, I know a hundred percent. But I rely on the expertise of the planner or architect, and also the demographer, too.
Okay, so my next question is.
Last question. Because you're, you're over the six-minute time.
Oh, okay.
You guys, you guys took like twenty-plus question from the Facebook user. I don't even know who are those users, right?
It doesn't matter who the users are, those are common questions.
Well, it's, let's, yeah, I mean, I, I, I want to answer the questions.
I waited here for two and a half hour, and you are asking me to leave, right?
Yeah, let's, I, I just want to hear the questions.
Go ahead, question.
Okay, so talking about the full-day kindergarten, all right? So based on like, if you look at the data, right, for the kindergarten, we have around eight hundred and fifty students. And in, in our first grade, we have around thirteen hundred students. If we offer full-time kindergarten, right, we need additional of forty classes at least. And we are adding only twenty-three classes in our elementary class, elementary schools. So can you tell me on what basis you are making a presumption that we're gonna offer full-day kindergarten?
I think if you listen to the architect, that we are now gonna convert those large classrooms that have four or six students into it, into full classrooms.
But how many?
Twenty-five, thirty?
I don't think so.
Again, you don't think so a lot.
Do we have twenty-five classes?
You think we're having a thousand extra students, too, but we're not. So the architect said, over the course of the time of us building these buildings, we would be able to possibly, and then I also spoke about possibly getting Stelton School to also alleviate and, and help out with the kindergarten pre-K population, so that's, that's the plan.
Well, Stelton gonna take forever to add, right?
No. Stelton would take probably one year to do.
So then if it's one year, then why we don't, have not done it from last ten years?
Because we're waiting for the township to work with us.
And the last question is, it's pretty quick. So how much money Board of Education has spent to market this referendum? Especially like, when you were saying, we have, like, built up this website, and then we have also attorney reviewing all those videos. Who's paying out those checks?
Right now, we, for the, for the video and all that stuff, we have a budget of forty thousand.
Okay, and how much is for attorney?
The attorney?
Attorney, yeah, because he said, like, our acting superintendent said.
You're talking about the bond council?
Yes. No, no, the bond council, because someone is reviewing the video, right, which you are putting on the.
Right, right. They get a hundred and forty dollars an hour, I, I don't know how many hours they actually worked on it, but it's a hundred and forty an hour.
But it's, if it's a forty-seven-hour video, then are they going to review the forty-seven-hour video?
No, they don't.
Let's do forty-seven hours. It was forty-seven hours of tape.
They put it in the video about twelve minutes.
Okay, but isn't that, we are not supposed to spend any money, Board of Education money?
If I may, what was.
If I may, what was actually reviewed was content, to, because of the prohibition against advocacy, so that the district was providing information and not taking a position.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, next. All right, yeah, do us three minutes, yes. Crystal, fourteen Fox, oh.
Let me know when.
Yeah, go ahead, ask all your questions, you have six minutes, then we'll answer.
All right, Crystal, fourteen Fox Road. Before I get started, I would like to let members in the audience, Brett Baker, know that while I'm up here, you're not a member of the board, so don't interrupt me the way you are interrupting Shivie. I'm just saying, don't pretend like you know what's going on, you're just in the audience. And you're also one of the people promoting yes online. Now, oh, congratulations to Ms. Pang.
All right, from questions only, please.
Okay, I just wanna say, I didn't want to waste my six minutes later, because this is short, and I'm smart like that. You said you only show your presentation and allow voters to decide, yet there's Board of Education members up here right now, and Democrats like Brett Baker, that they're promoting yes online. And anytime somebody says they're gonna vote no, either, I'm not gonna mention any names, but I see you guys promoting it, along with the Democrats. Why is that? I mean, you said, you just show the information online and allow the voters to decide themselves, but you're lying.
Can I ask a question?
No, no, let him, let him.
Okay, all right, all right.
Let him, six minutes, yeah.
No, no, this is a very short question, and that was the question. Ken Nelson came up here, he asked a legitimate question, and you lied to him. You said you just show that up there, and you allow the voters to decide. You were soliciting, on the day of the election, November fifth, you were outside many polling stations with the referendum, no, no, because they were outside the polling stations with the referendum, and you were promoting, illegally, you were promoting yes to the voters coming in. You were soliciting, you should've been arrested that day. But to continue on with my question, how are you gonna blatantly lie when I personally watch you online promoting the yes? I mean, I do watch him promote the yes, and I, and I read your comments, Ms., to President, to Mr. Brescher, I love you, Mr. Brescher, I wanna say congratulations to the Town Hall, because I don't want that to waste my time later. And, so you have anything to say, Jerry?
No.
That's all your question?
Yeah, why are you lying?
Board members also have First Amendment rights, and under the School Ethics Act, as long as they're speaking in their individual capacity, and not as board members, they are permitted to speak.
That's why he had to put the disclaimer up when he was confronted, that what he was doing is illegal, so the very next day, he put a disclaimer up, so he can promote such things on his Facebook page.
Well, you know what, let me just, because Shivie...
No, no, let him finish his, you have all your questions?
Oh, I would like, Mr. Brescher, no, no, I respect Mr. Brescher, let him speak.
Let him finish his questions, and we'll answer.
I told you, that was my question, so I would like to hear Mr. Brescher say what he has to say.
Well, I was gonna say, Shivie was actually the one, I'm gonna say a couple, I know, now she's looking up. I guess it was a couple years ago, where she told me that I didn't have a disclaimer on my thing, it could be an ethics violation. And then I had to call up the person that does my Facebook thing, because I don't do that, and ask her to put that kinda on there, because I don't know how to update that Board to add one on there. But she had to put that on there, because Shivie pointed it out to me. I'd say that was two years ago, Shivie?
Yeah.
But, but you have to put that disclaimer on there.
Okay, so Jerry, do you deny that you're online on Facebook promoting yes all the time?
I answer questions.
That is a question, do you, do you...
You confirm or deny that you're on Facebook promoting yes? Stop, stop, okay? I answer the questions people ask about the referendum.
That's a legitimate question.
I've never said yes or no in that. If, if you look at my response, you derive that I'm putting a yes answer, that's your prerogative, you decide, okay? It's your interpretation. Throughout the whole thing, I never said, well, yes, I never said, well, no. That's it.
It's always the same people promoting yes, Jerry Shee, Brescher, Brett Baker, and along with the Democrats.
Take it to the elect board, thank you.
Next, 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 uh... So, so you're gonna deny, you're gonna deny that you lied today, okay?
You did lie, everybody witnessed it. I don't, I don't need that.
Yes.
Tony Puswal, Two Pine Street, I can't... So, just get back to Ken Nelson's question, who's doing the website? Who's updating it? What's, why is that so hidden? Why, why can't we know who the PR firm is? Who is that?
Three, Three Com created, yeah.
We don't even know who the create, who the company is? You guys are up there, you hired them, you know who they are? Who did the website? Who registered the name? Who's updating it? Where are they getting the information from? Where's the answers to these questions?
Well, he'll answer your barrage of questions right now.
The name of the company who's doing all that work is Three Summers Creative.
Okay, thank you. It was, it was... I don't know why, when Ken asked, that was a problem, nobody can answer that. The other thing is, the video that you guys put out, not an informational video. Informational video is a video that would show us all the diagrams of what the building's gonna look like, all the diagrams of how it's gonna be built, what the final product's gonna be. What you guys produced is, yes, a public relations video to sway the voters to vote yes. Mr. Shee even proved that fact by a comment earlier. He said he watched the video fifteen times, and at the end, he always got emotional. Okay, what that means is, the video you produced was not informational, that was a video to sway the voters emotionally to vote yes for that. There is a difference, and I'm in this field, so I know how it works. You have different music in it, you try to get the people's emotions going, so all I'm trying to prove the point is, your informational video is not an informational video. If you did have one, it was, could've probably been made by the architectural firm, again, showing all the different views of what the building was gonna look like, all the plans in a deeper, more detailed plan. So, again, you spent forty thousand dollars on a video to sway voters to say yes. That's what you produced, okay? It caught your emotions, Mr. Shee, that's what that type of video does. So you spent the taxpayers' money to sway the voters to vote how you want them to vote, because that's why you hire a PR firm, okay? If you wanted to have just a informational video, you don't hire a PR firm to do that. You hired somebody to shoot forty-seven hours of video to produce an emotional video to sway voters. That's what you did, okay? So don't try to fool the citizens in trying to tell us, oh, it was just informational. No, it wasn't. It was not just informational, okay? You guys have a plan, you want it to go, it, you know, I hear a lot, oh, it's just for the kids. Well, there's probably some ego involved in some of that also, to say, hey, look what we did. Okay, so let's be real here, okay? Let's put out real information. Create a video that shows everything detailed of what we are paying for, not the emotional of, oh, the kids are, yes, and I know there's issues. But, again, you created a documentary to sway voters is what you did, okay? So let's put that out there straight. The other thing is, this was created just recently. How long have you guys been working on this? Why was this a website put out, only, what, two months ago? Why was this video just created now? You do all that, again, to put the information out, to sway the voters the way you want them to go, okay? So let's be real, okay? Let's stop all the games, because that's all you guys play, you've been playing this from the beginning, okay? This is how you guys want it, you want voters to vote yes, not for the kids, but for other reasons that I don't know, okay? Now, Mr. Shee, you, you, okay, I'm not gonna bring up something that happened at another meeting, and all you said it was just for the kids, okay? So you, in particular, are somebody that I don't trust in what you say, okay? So let's put that out there.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you for your comment.
Is my six minutes up?
You still have, you still have...
I still have one minute, okay, all right. Well, you know what, I'll give you guys back that one minute.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments?
Rich Sweeney, Sutton's Lane, Edison. Don't take the... Okay. I've lived in this town for over fifty, over fifty years. My wife went through the school system, my children went through the school system. The one thing I've always heard at the dinner table, or at homework, that they were pushed around in the hallways, and that's ten years ago. Now, the other thing is, you spoke in New Brunswick High School. I was on that site for three years, it's a four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-square-foot school. I was involved with a lot of construction in New Brunswick, with Devco, with the Housing Authority, of course, it is a redevelopment authority. But the long story's short, it's not a bad price, it really isn't. And the longer the Edison Township residents wait, and they've been, they've been turned down for the last bond, the longer we wait, it's more money this time. The longer we wait, it's more money next time. And I'm getting older, so I'm on a fixed income, so eighteen dollars isn't too bad. But anyway, I'm a yes for the referendum, you know? When you showed that one, the one where the kid with the teachers in the closet, I don't have a problem with that, but when I see them kids being pushed around, when I see those kids being pushed around and shoulder to shoulder, there's health issues that are involved in that situation as well. But like I said, I've been involved, I was on the New Brunswick High School, and it was, your quote was wrong, it was three-hundred-and-eighty-seven million dollars, I believe.
Oh, really? So you, oh, I gave the high price.
It was one of the most expensive projects in the state at the time, and Chikoli was on the, on the job at the time. But it really isn't a bad price, it really isn't. And, like I said, I don't have any kids in the system now, you know, but if you tax me too much, I got a big house, you talked about overcrowding, a lot of kids can fit in that house, at twenty-two thousand dollars a year.
Well, don't sell, don't sell your house.
But, I don't plan to, I don't plan to, because I'm second in line to Mr. Cal, Coach Calatoni, that loves Edison more than anybody, I'm in line second, buddy. But, yeah, like I said, it's a good price, it really is, and I've been to the presentations here, where I questioned twelve purple classrooms and architects and presentations, and I think it's been, I think it's been out there, not so much to the public, you know, because a lot of, how many people are you gonna fit in this room? You know, if you really, if you really market it properly, you would have a lot more people than would sit in this room. Some of the things in Edison that bother me, I don't wanna talk about the political end of it, but when you have a hundred and thirty thousand people, only fifty-nine thousand people vote, that's a problem, that's a problem, and that's a part of the problem here. Now, I live in the crosswalk of John Marshall School. I asked for traffic studies, because it's a mess, it's horrible. And I don't know if it's other schools like that, I think I seen one other school where the buses and da-da-da. And I don't know if a traffic study was done, since I asked the President, the Chair.
Yeah, it's part of the, yeah.
We discussed it at the council.
Yeah, because, you know, in, in all this construction, like he said, you know, the staging sites and stuff, it takes a lot, you know, so, without traffic studies and looking out for these kids for getting hit by buses and trucks and cars, because Sutton's Lane is really bad.
Yes.
It's really bad. And now that they opened up the, you know, all the development in Piscataway, and everything coming off all these highways, they cut, they don't wanna go to the one lane by the train station, they cut across and come across Sutton's Lane. But anyway, I just wanted to voice my opinion about, I'm a yes vote, because education, it's gonna pay off in the end.
Thank you very much.
Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Yeah, so, yeah, just, you know, we're talking more with the council on the, on the, on the traffic study. Any other public comments on the referendum? Yes, Maria?
Hi, Maria Orchid eighty-three Jefferson. I did wanna say, I watched the presentation, and I think there is missing some information. Well, first of all, to let the voters know that the increase would not take place until a certain amount of time, and also, I'd like to see a comparison study, as each project is going through its stages, how much the increase would be to the voters. I think some information was missing, that they're not always getting that rate increase right away. That's an essential piece of information. I am sorry to say that there's not a lot of voter turnout at these meetings. People wanna know their information, and unfortunately, sometimes they get it second-hand or not correct. I'd like us to see if there's another way that we can go out to the voters, to see if we can ascertain their comments. Not everybody has a computer, and unfortunately, that's how they get their information. Thanks.
Thank you.
Are we still on TV, on that, on the, you're on the regular, not YouTube, I mean, like the regular Edison?
Edison TV.
ESN.
We do, okay.
Any other referendum questions? All right, see none? All right, so let's move on to our regular agenda. Okay, so we have three meeting minutes, October seventh, fifteenth, and sixteenth. So if anyone has any questions, you can ask them a shot. So, yeah, Marcus, you can, you can leave, thank you very much.
Thank you, Marcus.
All right, so now, let's move on to administrative reports, Mr. Cantati.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome, Dr. Brigant. It's an exciting meeting tonight. Today, November twentieth, is National Education Support Professionals Day. So to those of you that are in the audience that are educational support professionals, today we celebrate you as amazing educators who play an important role in the lives of students, both in and out of the classroom. I thank you for making our schools whole. A huge thank you to the attendance investigators, bus aides, bus drivers, clerical aides, custodians, facility managers, grounds and maintenance workers, library aides, library assistants, licensed practical nurses, lunch aides, paraprofessionals, secretaries, security guards, registered nurses, teacher aides, and any other educational support professional, I forgot to enumerate, who work in our schools every day, we would not be able to function without you. Certainly does take a village. For this evening, there will be board policy revisions that the board will consider. As I've stated before, periodically, the board is required to update existing policies to be aligned with New Jersey Administrative Code and legislation. Tonight, there are twenty-four policies up for a second reading. As you can see, the policy committee, under Ms. Falguni-Patels' leadership, has been very busy. Under curriculum and instruction, field trip approvals, there are four trips, including the Model UN Club, a high school band trip, high school orchestra, and a trip to explore U.S. history. For professional development, there's a number of documentations up for approval for staff members to attend out-of-district events. And under pupil and special services, there are several terminated placements for out-of-district placements, readmissions, and new placements for the board to consider. There's also approval of the establishment of two new special education programs. Additional resources are needed for three new full-day preschool disability sections, so that's one type of program, a full-day program, and six half-day preschool disability sections, so that would require a total of six new special education teachers that would be hired into the future for our needy students in the preschool program. That's all I have, Mr. Shee.
Thank you. Now, BA report, Mr. Michelle.
All right, if you go to your investment report, you'll see, for the month of October, we received interest in the amount of fifty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars. So our total year interest this year so far is two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, sixty-six dollars. The next six pages is the Board Secretary's report for the financials for September of 2019, followed by the Treasury School Monies Report, also for the same period of time. And the next is the, these are the resolutions that we're presenting for Monday night's approval. The first item is the transfer of funds for September, and you'll note that most of these are either special education, or they're transportation. Those are the two lines that we've had problems with in the past, and again, I need to transfer money into those lines to cover the expenditures for the special ed students this year, plus the transportation that we have for all the students this year. So that's, we're a total of one million, two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, and you'll note that the ones I'm taking it from are the ones that have a lot of, that have large budget amounts, that may or may not be able to live with through the end of the year, and I can always put the money back if that happens towards the end of the year. But right now, I need to be able to cover these deficit situations for these special ed transportation routes. ed transportation routes. Item number two, every year, we have federal money, it's IDA grant money for some special education. If we don't spend it all, we're allowed to carry it over. They call it carryover funds. And this year, in the regular, basic IDA grant, we were able to carry over from last year, $155,848. And in the preschool part, which is, it's all 110,000 total for the year, but we carried over from last year, $496. We need the board to approve that, so we can submit a new application down to the state to include those funds, so we can spend it for this year. Item number three, non-public school security aid for non-public schools. We have one school that wants to purchase some materials for security, out of the non-public money that we get from the state. Item number four is the same thing, it's non-public schools, there's three of them for this, and this is for technology. We do get monies from the state for technology and security, that only is for the non-public schools, and it has to go through our records, and our board has to approve it in advance before they order the materials. Item number five is a small list of obsolete items we received from Woodrow Wilson. We'd like to have those declared obsolete on Monday. Number six is the bill list for the month of October, in the amount of $30,505,000. I already received some calls from some board members regarding some of those things on here. If you have any questions on that, please give me a call. And the last item is the transportation report for November. We have a few, there's only about six new runs that we had to have approved, and some jointure, jointure runs for some special ed students, and that concludes my report. Mr. Sheehan?
Okay, thank you. Now, we're open for board member comments. Any, yes, Mr. Roni.
Good evening. On December 12th, 2012, Ian Hockley's little boy Dylan, who was autistic, six-year-old child, was one of the 26 people killed in the Sandy Hook massacre. Mr. Hockley and I have become very, very close friends. In fact, he's been at my house all week. We have the Ian Hockley suite upstairs, and he comes and goes as he needs to when he's down in New Jersey. He is an amazing man, because he has taken the ultimate tragedy that a parent can face, and made something that's really changing our community, as well as other communities around New Jersey, Connecticut, and a little bit in New York, and we've now gotten inquiries from Florida. So the movement is taking off. The John Marshall wingmen came to the New Jersey School Board's convention last month, October, and they actually ran a session on the floor for the adults in attendance, and they were awesome. They're just so excited about what they're doing. And their surprise reward for the day was a trip down to the boardwalk and ice cream cones after their session that they did, but they were just awesome. And on Monday night of this week, Ian addressed the Woodrow Wilson parents. There were quite a number of parents who came. And when you hear him speak, there is not a dry eye, because it's very, talk about emotional, it's very emotional, when he tells the story of what happened to his little boy, and how the family had to face it. There was another school shooting last week by a young man whom nobody ever picked up that there was a problem with. He's now dead, and a couple of other children are dead as a result. The movement at Woodrow Wilson has really taken off. They had 150 children put applications in to become wingmen. 150. Because those children want to help other children. They understand better than we do as adults, what it means to work with one another. And on Monday night, the most amazing thing about the meeting was that the wingmen from Woodrow Wilson ran sessions with the parents. And the activity was, they all sit in a circle, and every person tells his or her name, the meaning of their name, how they got their name, whether they like their name, and would they change their name if they had the opportunity. So we had the children and the parents go around the room discussing this. And what was so interesting to me, and I never realized before, and all the time I'm doing wingman, that the adults benefited from introducing each other, because this was the first opportunity that they've really gotten to speak to one another. So not only is the wingman program uniting the children in our schools, but it also has great potential for uniting the adults as well. So I'm just so excited about this last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member comments? Yes.
About a month and a half ago, we received a word through the school email that the group headed by Dora Ramos, CARE, Community Action Reaches Everyone, was being dissolved, and the remaining funds, near $10,000, was being donated to the Marissa Trifaro Foundation. We know that that donation is a small part of what Dora and her CARE staff has achieved. And I would just like to point it out, because we shouldn't just let that go by the boards, all right? Due to Dora Ramos' position as attendance officer in the Edison School, she came in daily contact with children and families who were in need of help. Dora perceived an avenue to be of help, and soon became acquainted with the services offered to needy citizens, and expertly referred contacts to them. This evolved into what we have known for the past 20 years as CARE, and her reach has been broad and deep. Dora enlisted the help of all hands, mayor, superintendent of schools, township employees, Edison Municipal Alliance, school faculty, staffs, and childrens. From fundraising walks, wine and cheese events, to education such as new beginnings with the homework and computers, Crosswords Program for ESL students and adults, peer monitoring at elementary and middle schools, supply-equipped backpacks, and high school employment application skills, to health education that included CPR for parents, training for parents, eyeglasses for students, to housing for rent and dislocation programs, to social events such as community Christmas dinner, kickoff dinners, end-of-the-year trips and dinner, gifts, cards, clothing, prom dresses and tuxedos, and to personal and family ties such as school clothing for students, work clothes for parents, energy assistance, transportation, furniture, supporting hand, helping hands, food pantry. Unfortunately, Dora's not here tonight. She always comes to this caucus meeting, and she's not here. But we owe Dora, and this community owes Dora Ramos, one huge thank you. So thank you, Dora, wherever you are.
You're absolutely correct, Teresa. So any other board members? Yes.
A couple of quick things. One, I would like the attorney, because I did ask you back, if you could explain to the public why the contract for the possible superintendent is not public knowledge yet.
It's not public knowledge, it has not been voted on. It will be posted on Monday, which would be prior to, actually, to the vote. But it is, in the event there are any changes, it's still actually in the, it's still a live, living document.
Okay, thank you. To just piggyback off of Beth, Beth was instrumental in getting that wingman program in my school district, and actually tomorrow, we are having workshops on that in my school district. So I hope in the future, we could maybe even get two school districts together to work as wingmen in grade level. So, you know, I look forward to doing something like that. And then lastly, real quickly, want to wish my daughter a happy birthday, which is today. She's not very happy, I didn't go out to dinner with her tonight, but I'm sure she'll make me pay for that at some other point. And then also, my son, my oldest boy, is getting married this Saturday, so I wish him and his fiancee all the best. Thank you.
Mr. Eric, since you are, you are all this, can you give us an update, what happened with this, what's happening with that red field?
Oh, your red field. Did Mr. Calattoni, oh, Mr. Calattoni's still here. Yes, we are still in the process. The latest on the field, and I'll give a report Monday also, is that we, Dan, did get the check out. We do have permits being purchased as we speak, soil permits also. We're supposed to be meeting maybe Monday, and I'm waiting to hear back from Perry, who's the turf field representative, to go over final details, colors, things like that. But it is moving along. It took a little longer than I would like, but hopefully we'll have a shovel in the ground, thanks to Mr. Ross and Coach Bean and everyone else that's pushing, pretty soon, within the next couple of weeks.
Are we going to be ready for next season, or no?
We will definitely try. I've learned not to make any promises when it comes to construction.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members? All right, see now, we're open for public comments. Anybody? Yes.
If by chance, this bond issue does not pass, how soon can we put one together again for the public to vote on?
I think we could probably have it ready for March.
March?
January's another date, but I don't think we can do it that quickly, that's only a one-month turnaround, so I think it'd have to be March.
I asked that question only because I'm going to wait until Monday night to bring up the reason I asked that question. We've been here long enough.
But, you know what, Dan, I'd just like to just comment on that. And when you say, put the bond back up, if you put the bond back up at that same number, you can.
Yes.
Architect left. But, right, if you're going to redo the bond in some other configuration, then the architect has to go back through, redo his numbers, and it has to be resubmitted to the state, and that takes a couple of months for the state to approve. You know, that's only if you're going to modify it a little bit. So it depends on what...
Let's hope it passes, and then if it doesn't, don't modify it, we'll just make a true argument, and I'll bring up a few points on my...
You're saving for money, okay? Anybody, I saw somebody, yeah.
It's like a cliffhanger, Mr. Brunner.
Joseph Johnson, 407 Durham Avenue. First and foremost, I would just like to congratulate and acknowledge the winners of the Edison Board of Education election, Ms. Shivi Prasad Madukar, Mrs. Carol Budowsky, and lastly, Mrs. Shannon Pang. Next, I would just like to congratulate our Edison High Football Team for yet another wonderful, successful season. Unfortunately, they were handed a tough first-round loss in the New Jersey State Group Five playoffs against Lenape Valley due to the redistricting of the playoffs. But we're extremely proud of our team, as well as our athletes. And furthermore, I just want to come to, well, come this evening, to spread the announcement of year two of the Lena Harris Foundation Mentorship Program. The potential dates of the program will start February 8th, and it ends March 28th. Once again, that's February 8th, it's all Saturdays, so the Saturdays from February 8th all the way down to March 28th, 2019, with a projected date of March 1st, 2019, for...
2020.
Yeah, 2020, oh yeah, sorry, 2020. With the projected date of March 1st, 2020, for our yearly trip to Monmouth University, as well as April 4th, 2020, for our scholarship and awards banquet, and this year it'll be held at the Pines Manor. This year, we'll be combining JP Stevens High School students, along with Edison High School students, and hosting a culminating program, which will be held at JP Stevens Public Library. This year, we have added five mentors who have graduated and/or attended Edison Public Schools, so we are extremely excited to get started, and hope we're able to continue to bless our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the good work. Okay. Susan.
Susan Campione, HCF Court. As most of you know, I've been pretty vocal for the ESP recognition through the board and the schools, so I just wanted to thank Mrs. Cantaldi for recognizing us, and hopefully it will trickle down to the schools and the principals, and there's a lot of us in the district now. And my hope before I retire is that the board will add in, when they do the Teachers of the Year, that we do an ESP of the Year, not just through the ETA, but through the school district. So, but thank you again for recognizing us.
Good suggestion, thank you.
It used to be like speech, speech class for ESL, that's ESL.
I'm Maria Orchid, 83 Jefferson. My first comment is, when you're considering on putting the calendar together, please do not, or do not have meetings the same night as the council. It's tough making one meeting, let alone two. I'd appreciate it if you could not schedule the same day. On December 7th, we'll have our tree lighting at the Clara Barton Heritage. Please come. There'll be lots of activities going on. It starts on 2:00, and the tree lighting will be after 5:00, in front of the Heritage. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. Any update on the ROTC?
Oh, I do.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Beth.
So, when I was at convention, School Board's convention, two, the Air Force and the Army were there, and I got cards from them, and I have to contact their offices to arrange for that.
Maybe we have money in the funding next year to maybe start the program? I heard that was the main point.
For the following school year?
Yeah.
We would have to also find out, we'd also have to find out the interest level, too. So, I don't know if we could do something through the guidance offices, maybe getting something out and getting an interest level, because we did try this, Mr. Labassi, if you remember Mr. Phil Labassi, many years ago, was a former military gentleman, and we tried to start a ROTC program many years ago, and there was just a lack of interest, to be honest with you. So I think we need to get the interest level first, and then we can call up the Air Force and the Army to come in and talk to us. But I think the way we did it the last time was through the guidance office, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, but this goes back 20 years ago, so...
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Before I start, I want to say to my old gym teacher, and my old driver's ed teacher, I love you, you guys were always good to me. I always remember the people, I never forget the people that were good to me. So with the help of Shannon Pang, Neville Aristani, Mahesh Bhagia, and Jerry Shi, a job was awarded to Sanita Malhotra, the sister of, this is, this is public comments, I can speak? The sister of Deepak Bhalani, without proper process as a personal favor. Jerry Shi gave her a very high-paying job, $100,000 a year, I believe, without proper process, and she made mistakes, and made mistakes in people's payrolls. When they found out and asked Jerry, he tried to throw Falguni Patel under the bus. He lied, claiming Sanita Malhotra is related...
I would remind you as a...
This is public comments?
Yeah, I understand that it's public comment.
Can you please not interrupt me during my public comment?
I absolutely must remind you that you may be held personally liable if you actually engage in defamation. That's just...
Okay, now, I'll restart my speech, thank you. With the help of Shannon Pang, Neville Aristani, Mahesh Bhagia, and Jerry Shi, a job was awarded to Sanita Malhotra, the sister of Deepak Bhalani, without proper process as a personal favor. Jerry Shi gave her a high-paying job, $100,000 a year, and she made mistakes in people's payrolls. When they found out and asked Jerry, he tried to throw Falguni Patel under the bus, and he lied, claiming Sanita Malhotra is related to Falguni. That's a lie. Sorry you had to go through that, Falguni. When in reality, Sanita is Deepak Bhalani's sister. You know Deepak Bhalani very well, he was sitting next to you at the PTO debate at Woodbrook, and I have a photo of that. Bresher, I was told Bresher, Joy Shipman Freeman, they all knew about this. Am I wrong about that, Bresher? Or would you like to not comment?
About Falguni being under a bus? Which portion of your statement?
Okay, I'm going to continue. Deepak's daughter, who was thrown out to democratically-owned Brett Baker, news tapping to Edison, used her platform to attack BOE candidates, and helped elevate the IGL Shi team. Jerry broke the law soliciting votes for Shi team outside many polling stations. That's Neville Aristani, Shannon Pang, and who was the third one? Tahir Masoodi, yeah, that was Sam Khan's cousin, or whatever, sister-in-law. Along with Raj Bhagia, whose brother Mahesh is part-owner, and runs the fake news democratically-owned ... Bhagia, whose brother Mahesh is part-owner and runs the fake news democratically-owned Tap Into Edison. Jerry? I'm not done yet. My six minutes isn't done yet. Thank you. So do you deny any of these accusations? Thank you for your comment. Well, I'm not going to get sued, because I already know they're 100% truthful, so to the lawyer, I would like to go to you, to the lawyer. Thank you for warning me, but, you know, I didn't see you interrupt anybody else today, and that's not right.
I only interrupted you in order to be able to advise you of your potential personal liability. If the...
Well, he can sue me if he likes. He can go ahead and sue me, and the town's already... I just want you to know, there's a town in New Jersey that recently, the whole residents gathered, and they gathered protesting outside the Board of Education building to fire their president, and I would just like Edison residents to wake up, start coming out here to the BOE meetings, and start protesting Jerry Shi and demand his resignation. I don't like the things you've been doing lately. And if it was up to me, I'd slap the flex cuffs on you myself. You're lucky I don't have a badge. You're lucky I'm not a police officer.
You've got to watch what you say.
Now you're going to intimidate residents for speaking during public comments. He didn't come in here for anybody else.
Excuse me, your comments are now out of order.
They have never been out of order.
It can be taken as threatening a public official.
How did I threaten somebody?
If you continue, we will ask for you to leave.
I threatened somebody by saying if I was a police officer, I would lock them up?
If you continue...
In what way, in what way did I threaten bodily harm to anybody?
I will ask for you to be removed.
When somebody commits a crime, they need to be locked up, such as soliciting votes outside polling stations. Is there a threat there?
I did not say that. I said, if you threaten a public official, I will ask for you to be removed from the meeting.
All right, well, Jerry Shi's going to be fired soon anyway, so I don't even think you'll finish your year off, so. Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes.
Jerry Campion, H.C. for court. I just want to take a moment, first of all, to publicly thank Beth Maroni and your efforts in bringing the Wingman program to Woodrow Wilson Middle School. I was there on Monday night, and I had the privilege of meeting Mr. Hockley and hearing his story, and I have to say, I've heard Beth speak of it many times. We've talked a lot, but being there and actually seeing the, seeing his impact on the young people was really, I think, was most striking. And yes, seeing the parents interact with the students was great. I'm also immensely proud, because several of the wingmen this year are my former students, so I do get great pleasure out of seeing the work that they're doing. This is a good program, and I'm glad that we're pursuing it, so thank you for everything you're doing with that. I also want to, every day is something, and as it turns out, today, of course, is National ESP Day, so thank you, Ms. Cantaldi, for your remarks as a former ESP, married to a current ESP. But Friday is National Substitute Educators' Day, as part of American Education Week, and I know that within the district, we don't have enough, we never do, but we have many that show up every single day, and I am a former substitute educator, too, and they show up every day, and just as without the ESPs, we cannot accomplish what we accomplish in the classrooms, without the substitute educators helping to fill those gaps on a daily basis, we just cannot get done what we need to get done. So we have many that show up every single day. They show up regularly, just as the teachers do. Some of them work 180 days a year. So I just want to publicly acknowledge them for their contributions to our district, because they are an important part of what we do. Thank you.
And people in the town have heard us talk about the substitute workshop, which was held last Friday. We had two sessions, and 160 of my new best friends came and attended and picked up the necessary paperwork, so let's hope that we get a new, fresh batch of substitutes for the district. Thank you, Mr. Campione.
Yeah, Jerry, thank you for those comments. I wanted to tell you that when we train the children, we don't tell them that Dylan was shot. We don't tell them about Sandy Hook. We just, if they ask us what happened, because they get the sense that he's gone, and when Ian is there, he will tell them that Dylan died, and it was a tragedy, but that's all we tell them. So on Monday night, those kids had no idea that he was going to go into that detail, and it was really, really something.
Matt Revnak, 2 Ethel Road, ETA Vice President. I also want to jump on Mr. Campione, Mrs. Campione, and thank you, Mrs. Cantaldi, for the ESP recognition. You know, these are the people that keep our schools safe, keep our schools clean, work with our most needy students, serve our lunches, et cetera. So they really do, and they're as big a part of our staff and part of our community as the teachers, the administrators, et cetera. So I thank you for acknowledging them as well. Two other points I'd like to make. The gentleman before that spoke about the, you know, the demographic study. Just to put in perspective, and I think Mr. Bresher hit it right on the nose, take the 60 people, 70 students that are here, quote, illegally, that are removed by the attendance investigations. If every one of those kids are in all different classes, it doesn't impact losing or saving a class at all, or eliminating classes, and if they're all on different buses, so it's not a savings monetarily, pretty much, at all. Same thing with what was mentioned. You know, when you're dealing with, you know, 100, 200 students out of 3,000, it is not a huge impact at all in terms of the differences. So I did want to point that out, because, you know, people say, well, you have 60 kids, and when you're dealing with 16,000, and if they're spread across all different classrooms, it has no impact at all in terms of a cost savings. The second thing I want to just mention, that was the gentleman before about the video. You know, I'm not here to say whether you should vote or not for the bond, per se. Obviously, as an educator, I support the needs of our students. I've been in JP Stevens for 31 years, and I know what it was like. One of the few people that is there longer than me was Mr. Dean Nicola, who was in the video. You know, in 31 years, I've seen the changes, I've seen the overcrowding and the effects that it has on the students. Whether you want to call it that it's an emotional plea or whatever, but we are in a profession, we are in a situation here that's human. We don't sell a commodity, and I've spoken about this before. You know, we have posters up here, which demonstrate what the building's going to be. There's all kinds of, you know, presentations on the website, and if you come to the board meetings and watch them on, you know, Edison News Channel, et cetera. So the numbers speak for themselves. People can see those things are up, but they don't get the humane part of it, and they don't see and hear from the students that were in those video, in that video, the teachers and, you know, knowing what, that are in the trenches, and see what happens on a daily basis. And I appreciate the video for that, because being there for 31 years and knowing what JP Stevens, and by the way, I'm also in many of the other buildings as, you know, my position with the association. And, you know, these schools are overcrowded, and it does have a direct impact on the student's education, the student's well-being. You know, we just brought in, and we talked about, we brought in the, you know, the armed security officers for safety. It's not safe when you're going from one building into another in the fourth grade at a place like JMI, into a, you know, a building that's not attached, or the high schools, okay? It's not a safe situation. You can have an armed security officer there, they can't be in every part of the building at every moment of the day. So one of the things is, and I, quite honestly, I did visit, in fact, I visited, I told Mrs. Campione, I'd stop over at Woodrow Wilson, and I was actually at the FDR Building last week. And yet, the modular classrooms, they're not bad for a temporary fix, but it's not permanent. You know, I believe the life expectancy on them are something like 10 years or 12 years, okay? Give or take, but they're not permanent, and it's still not like being in the actual building itself. The other thing with that is, was brought up about some of the other expenditures, like the sports fields, the athletic facilities, et cetera. That also has a direct impact also on instruction, all right? I've been actually going outside of one, in fact, I ran into Mr. Bresher walking the other day, and we spoke outside. And, you know, the kids now, they're out there on the fields during gym class, phys ed class, you know, if it rained in the morning, they may still be able to get out in the afternoon because of the turf fields. And there's a big difference. I know, even going back a few years ago, where, you know, when a football field was still grass, you weren't going on it. Those fields are used now for all kinds of different things, phys ed classes, et cetera. I coached for 10 years. I know what the gymnasiums are like. You know, I think Mr. Erico mentioned before, he's absolutely right. I mean, or actually, I believe Mr. Ross mentioned in the video as well, the gyms themselves are not made for the size schools we have. In fact, one of the things I questioned years ago, when we put in what was then the new gym at JP Stevens, which is about 15, 20 years old now, why wasn't that built bigger? You know, because anticipating that our, you know, population was going to continue to grow. You know, one of the things I always said is, you can't have graduation there. If we built a nice facility with 3,000 seats, we wouldn't have to go to Rutgers necessarily. We could have graduated JP Stevens like we did years ago, which was horrible, because you didn't have, in fact, Ms. Maroni, you were there when we had it indoors, in the old gym.
Yep.
You know, and it's just, you can't have it there. So, you know, looking forward and seeing some of these things, you know, you have to project into the future. And if we don't do something today, and quite honestly, I've said this before again in this forum, this should have been done 10, 15 years ago. There was never any foresight to what was going to happen down the road. You're at a point now where it's a breaking point, and if it's not done, it's only going to get worse. And yes, it is going to affect the education of our students, which will also affect the rankings of our school, and quite honestly, eventually down the road, that affects, again, property values and everything else. So, you know, whatever happens, it has to get done. It has to get done, because it's really become a volatile situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes.
Anthony DiAmmer, 15 Rodex Circle. I just had two quick points I wanted to bring up. You know, I had my disagreements on this bond, which I'm not going to discuss here tonight, but one of the disagreements I had was, or issues I had, was the way you were giving information to the public. So what I did was, I reached out to Mr. Bresher, and we had a lengthy conversation, and I asked him if he would participate in a forum, an open forum for the public to come, ask questions, and he agreed to it, and I'm thankful. That's going to be, I think, is it Sunday or the 24th, at 76 George Avenue? So I recommend for those, and I give you my word, I'm not going to bring my own biases in there, this is for people that have real serious questions about it, to come to 76 George Avenue, 7:30 Sunday, I think it's the 24th. Mr. Bresher was nice enough to offer his services. I see Rich making the case online constantly. I give him credit. I have my disagreements, but he is there making his case, so, but, so I appreciate that, Mr. Bresher. Thank you. So again, 76 George Avenue. Last thing, December 13th, Friday the 13th, I'm hosting a toy drive, and invite everybody to come by. It's going to be at the Grace Reform Church. I don't have the, do you know the address? On Whibley Avenue, from 5 to whenever. Santa might make an appearance. It's going to a good cause, so Friday the 13th...
2015, Whibley.
2015?
2015.
2015, Whibley Avenue. The 13th, Friday the 13th, from 5 to whenever. So please come by, say hello, we'll have light refreshments and so on and so forth. And again, this Sunday, 7:30, for the open forum. Please, if you're going to come, be respectful. This is not, it's not meant to be a three-ring circus, it's meant to actually get information out there, so again, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Shivi Madhukar, Nyle Allison Court. I just wanted to extend the invitation to all board members, anybody who wants to come. Most welcome to anybody here who wants to come, 76 George Avenue, November 24th at 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? See none? Oh, yeah. Yeah, sorry.
I don't like talking in front of people all that much, but a couple of things came up tonight that I really wanted to expand upon. Oh, sorry. Russ Burner, 19 Mill Road. When we were talking about the bond before, and I know Ralph brought it up, too, with the baseball field, and with that being added into the referendum, I think that's a great thing for the kids. I know there's two guys in suits over there, they're big proponents of sports, especially Mr. Ross. If you've been around town for a long time, that high school was down for a while, man, and then Mr. Ross came in, brought it up. The kids are proud to go there now, and not just because of academics, but because of athletics, and it's built up everything. He knows the guy, he knows the kids, and I remember when I coached hockey, he would call me to try and find out, announces would give to kids, and if you know our history of our hockey program in town, and it hasn't exactly been the most storied program in the history of the world, but Mr. Ross would stress that we had to build positives for it. He would find out some way to make an announcement, give the kids nicknames and stuff like that, and I think that builds a lot of stuff for the kids in school. My son is a freshman this year. He's a very bright kid. He's in five honors classes, brag post right there. But the thing that gets him to go to school is he wants to play baseball for Edison High. He wants to represent his town. He wants to be like Coach Cal, who loves Edison more than anybody else. But for a lot of kids, I think we lose focus that academics are great, that's what we're there for, but for a lot of those kids, the reason why they're there is to get on the field at the court, or maybe it's, you know, Math-athon, whatever it may be, all those extracurriculars in sports are what drives the school, I think, and I know Mr. Ross gets it, and the kids love him for that. Dovetailing along with that, I'm a huge Alabama fan. Going to go into a little sports story right here. Yeah, it was a rough week for Bama, but hopefully it gets better. So a guy that they had named Bear Bryant, I don't know if anybody knows in sports history at all, but Bear Bryant played for Alabama, won a couple of national championships as a player. Left to coach, coached at Kentucky, he ended up at Texas A&amp;M, they were a pretty bad team, turned them into contenders for a national championship. The coach at Bama left, they were having some tough times, and Bear Bryant left Texas A&amp;M to come back to Bama, and they asked him, why did he do that? He said, Mama called, and when Mama called, you come running. There's a guy over there who Mama called, and he came back running, and I'm proud of you guys for making that choice to bring back Bernie Brig and Dr. Brig. I've known him for quite some time, and that move worked out pretty good for Alabama, and I think it's going to work out good for Edison, too. So, thank you guys for that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Brig.
I just want to add that, you know, for the turf field, you didn't have to wait for the bond referendum. It's coming.
Right, I know.
All right? It's before that.
That was even better for...
That's right, that's right. Thank you. So any other public comments? See, now, we go to closed session.
No, we got to make a... We got to make a close...
Whereas...
No, 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 we're not done yet. No, 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 we're not done yet.
Whereas, Section 8 of the Opening Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Rules of 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the Tension of Edison as follows: One, the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the herein specified subject matters. Two, the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed as follows: Attorney, private privileged discussion regarding litigation brought on by former employees, superintendent search, Tension of Litigations, Student Matters, Edison Wetlands Association Contract, ETA Grievances, Perk and Unfair Labor Practices, Personnel Matters. Under Personnel, we'll be discussing resignations and terminations, retirements, appointments, leaves of absences, changes of status, longevity, stipends, salary adjustments, Learning Academy for John Adams, substitute staff, coaching appointments, job descriptions, and authorization for extended health benefits. Three, it is anticipated at this time that the above stated established matter shall be made public access at such time as the needs for nondisclosure no longer exists, and for this resolution shall take effect immediately.
All right, can I have a motion? Mrs. Maroni, second. Okay, Mr. Erico.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway? Mrs. Patel?